6:30 and Quorum being present, I am calling this annual town meeting of 2024 to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and Selectman Kaufman is going to lead us in the pledge. Would you all rise and remove non-religious headgear?
The Pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Everybody hear me okay? I would also like to take, it's rather unusual, I think, for us to hold our annual town meeting on June the 6th. And for some of us, most of us, we understand and know that today is the anniversary of D-Day. And so what I would like to do is take a moment of silence this evening, just to recognize not only those that have given that last full measure on D-Day, but those who were serving and their families. So if we could, just take a few moments of silence. Thank you. The first, the next thing that I would like to do is identify non-residents, non-voting citizens of Brookfield who may potentially need to speak here this evening. So I'm going to list several names, and then I'm going to ask for unanimous consent that those individuals be allowed to speak here this evening. Let's see. So we've got Town Manager, and I would like to recognize and welcome our new Town Manager, Ron Aponte. He's right here in the middle. So all the darts go right there. Right there. Okay. We also have up here our Town Council, Michelle Randazzo. Sorry, Michelle. We have our accountant here that needs to be recognized. Chief Blanchard is over there. He's non-resident, and he doesn't expect to speak tonight, but I still want to make sure that we get him out there. The principal of the elementary school is here, and I would also like to sort of name her as someone that may have to address town meetings. So is there, I don't believe there are any others. Am I missing anybody up front here? No, Superintendent's already covered. And you are, oh, Highway Superintendent. What's that? Pete DeCler, okay. All right. Anyone else? So if there's no objections, I would like those individuals, I would like to give those individuals permission to speak here at town meeting. Is there anybody that objects to that? Very good. Those individuals will be allowed to speak. What I would like to do next is just read the rules. I got everything all in the wrong place here. I just like to read the rules so that everybody sort of knows what they are. Most of you know a lot of these rules already, but it's always a good reminder. I do a lot of meetings and I always remind myself. So, Rule Number One, there are limits to debate. Each member who wishes to speak on a motion has no more than two minutes, and I will have a timer up here. Each member may speak two times on any given motion, but may not speak a second time on any motion until everyone else wishing to speak on any given side has spoken. You need to come to the microphone up front here. So if you want to line up down the center, if you want to speak, and sometimes that happens, people just line up, go ahead and do so. Time limits are overall. If you ask a question, the answer comes from your time. So if you come up and they ask a question, the answer comes out of your time. Rude disrespectful speech will not be tolerated. Also remarks attacking the character of an individual, including statements that someone has an agenda or ulterior motives, will be called out of order. We have Chief Blanchard is actually on duty here this evening. Normally it's constables, but Chief Blanchard has the duty this evening. So if you fail to listen to what I have to say, Chief Blanchard may, I may ask Chief Blanchard to usher you out of the meeting. All right. Applauding, cheering, booing, or other expressions of approval or disapproval are not permitted. Please let people speak and don't cheer or shout or boo or anything. Thank you. The previous question, which is a motion to close debate or stop debate, once made and adopted, that is going to end all debate. In the past, there were occasions where someone would make a motion at the microphone and there would be a line. And even though the motion was adopted, all those that were standing in line still had an opportunity to speak. That will not happen. If somebody makes it to the microphone and makes a motion for the previous question to end debate, and that motion is successful on a two-thirds vote, the debate will be closed. Everybody sits down and we're going to vote on things. Okay? Just want to be clear. In debate, I will attempt to do my best to alternate between supporting and opposing views. That doesn't really work out altogether so well, but I'm going to make an attempt to do that if it seems to be sort of lopsided. We are here to make decisions about the town of Brookfield. Decisions are made by making motions, debating, and voting. No one should speak unless they are engaged in one of those three things. You may have a question, but it should be a question that is either leading to a motion to amend something, or that's it. I'm not going to tolerate a lot of questions if it's not leading to a motion. Okay? You got to get a motion on the floor to debate, to debate things. You should look to address the town meeting either in support or in opposition to a motion. So when you get up here, I am in support of this motion, or I oppose this motion, and this is why. You can certainly, again, you can certainly ask questions during debate, but please keep questions and debate focused on the motion at hand. If someone has stolen your thunder, so to speak, and made the point that you wanted to make, please refrain from repeating. If a point has been made, I may ask you to either bring a new point or to stop. If you think I'm doing something wrong, which sometimes happens, you can't hear, or something else is going wrong, or I've done something wrong, you can raise what's called a point of order to let me know. You don't necessarily have to say point of order. You can just simply call out and say, "I can't hear you," or "There's something wrong." Okay? But point of order is the official way to look at things. Hang on one second. Finally, if, in the past, when we've come across an article where no motion is made, we have used a so-called motion to pass over. There is no such motion. Furthermore, if there is no reason for town meeting to take any action when there is no motion, there's no reason for us to take any action if there's no motion. Okay? So if you know that you're not going to be, if you're responsible for an article here, and you know that you're not going to be offering a motion, just don't offer the motion. It'll just save us time and energy. All right. So I'm going to save my comments for the budget when we get to that point. All right. Any questions on those rules so far? Anybody have any questions or not sure about what I just said?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. John Holcraft, 26 Allen Road. I'd like to know if you could reconsider if people are at the microphone and they take the time to get up to the microphone and they have something to say. And the more people talk about an article, the more we are educated here at this meeting tonight. So if there's seven people or 10 people here and they want to speak and someone moves the question, you think you can reconsider and let those people speak like we used to do in the old days?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right then. Article Number One.
I move that the town accept the annual report of the town officials as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to accept the annual report of town officials as printed and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. That's a pretty weak aye there. Maybe it's just we're too hot in here or something. I don't really know, but nevertheless. All right. So now we're on to Article Number Two, which is the budget. So I need a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $10,482,383.69 to defray the expenses of the town for the ensuing year, as shown in the fiscal year '25 budget, as printed in the annual town meeting budget.
A motion has been made to adopt the budget in the amount of $10,482,383.69. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There is a second to the motion. Hang on one second. I got to fix something here. All right. Okay. So, the way that we're going to work this is, I'm going to, I'm not going to read through all of this. I'm just going to go page by page. And if you have any question on any given line item, all you need to do is get up to the microphone or say, "I have a question," and you can ask your question. Or it should be leading to, and again, your question really should be designed to, if you want to make an amendment to the number that is there. Okay? You may be thinking, you know, I'm not sure I want to vote for that as high as it is. You may want to make it lower, but you may want some reasons for why it's as high as it is. And so you could ask that question, why it's like that. But then I want you to be thinking about sort of making a motion to amend the line item. So that everybody is clear, the budget is in the back of the booklet that you have. And the numbers that we are using is the gray column, the Select Board recommended. All right? Everybody with me so far? All right. So the first page has line numbers, and the line numbers are way over on the left, line numbers 1 through 24. Is there anybody that seeks to make a motion to amend any of these line items? You really do need to come to the microphone to-
Mr. Moderator, through you, I have a question. On that back page, Rudy Heller, 8 Central Street. The gray column has that number you read, but the Advisory Board has a lower number. Can there be an explanation of why the two aren't the same? Thank you.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Go for it.
All right. If you take a look at those two budgets, there are some nominal differences this year between the Select Board and the Advisory Budget. The preponderance of the differences is that the Select Board budget is at a 4% cost of living increase for the salaries for the municipal employees that are not covered by the school or the police contracts. Okay? And there are some other nominal differences associated with overall wages in the Treasurer's Office, some differences amongst the reserve fund funding levels. And there are actually a couple of probably typos that are differences between the two budgets. Okay? Overall, the Select Board budget leaves us roughly $62,500 between our operating budget and our levy plus our other sources of revenue that we typically refer to as levy limit, though it's a bit of a misnomer. Okay? The Advisory Budget has about $76,500 headroom to that limit. So they're very close. There are some nominal differences. The bulk of that difference is in the wages difference between the two budgets.
Christopher Kelleher, 36 Lake Road. I'd like to make a motion that on line item number 21, we've allocated $558.48 to the Advisory Committee Clerk's salary. I'd like to move the town to pay those funds to Sarah Campbell.
Um, you-
Oh, I thought we were doing 1 through 21. What, first page?
You're looking for line 21.
Yep.
And your motion to amend is to-
My motion is that we pay out that $558.48 to Sarah Campbell.
That's out of order. We can't-
It's out of order?
Yeah. Any other items of concern with line items 1 through 24? Hearing none? And by the way, if we're going through this and you go back, or you know, you're like, "Hey, wait a second. I want to rethink line number 14." Please, you know, just let me know and we'll backtrack and we'll do it. Okay? All right. Line numbers 25 through 49. The other thing that I should have made clear, I believe that the Advisory Board and Selectmen could correct me if I'm wrong, but only those lines that have an account number associated with them are lines that we can amend. Okay? They'll have results further on down, but only the ones that, so if you see the line number over on the left, then there's account numbers. Only the lines that have an account number are ones that we can amend. Okay? Just want to be clear. Is that- Okay. You can amend any of them. I'm game. Line items 25 through 49.
Okay. Pat Washburn, 12 Maple Street. I have a question on the increase of the Treasurer's wages. That's number one. And number two, I'm also questioning the, never mind. That's the one I'm questioning.
There's a question on Treasurer's wages. Somebody want to explain? Is there a specific aspect of-
Well, I want to know why there's an $18,000 increase in the wages.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Apparently Ms. Washburn is not familiar with the annotation that indicates that's a negative 18,000, and we're actually reducing Treasurer's wages by that amount from the prior year. And that's because we're reducing the hours in the office.
Okay. But the Advisory Board is asking, is allocating, that they say it's $51,600, and the Select Board is looking for $62,400. Why is such a big difference?
So the difference is that we calculated, I believe, I want to say 25 or 26 hours per week, and I think that the Advisory did it at 20, but I have to check with them.
That is correct. We had a difference in the number of hours that we, as an Advisory Committee, thought that the Treasurer needed and the Selectmen at a different set of numbers.
How many hours is the Treasurer working?
The hours. I'm sorry.
How many hours is the Treasurer working now?
The accountant would be able, I think, to answer that specifically.
Hi, Lori Barkus, Town Accountant. We have an interim Treasurer right now who's working for us part-time. She's working anywhere between 18 and 24 hours a week. We haven't hired a permanent replacement for the Treasurer that left us a few months ago yet.
So the Treasurer that worked for us before, how many hours would they be working?
Forty. We've made the decision to lower the position to part-time. We're just trying to determine how many hours part-time is for this town.
And how many clerks does that Treasurer have?
None. And we're not going to hire a clerk.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Are we not going to go through every line like we always do?
No, I'm just going to go page by page. You got a question or you want to make an amendment, go ahead. Otherwise, we're just going to go through it. Yeah.
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
To do with the Assessor's position, our latest Principal-
Could you give me a line item number on that?
So it's line item 25 through 31. Basically, we've made some changes. As a result of the Principal Assessor retiring, we're going to move up the clerk approximately 24 hours a week from 15 hours a week, but we're losing the Principal Assessor's position, and we've subcontracted the rest of it to do inspections, to do building permits, anything related to the Assessor's office. So I would like to make that line item that the Advisory Board recommended of $90,980.09 to $70,980.09.
Say that for me. $70,000-
We're going up at the Select Board.
Oh, okay. So, excuse me. I would like to read $71,603.08.
Okay, let me make sure I have this correct. You would like to amend line item 31-
That's correct.
-to read $71,603.08.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a second to the motion? All right. Would you like to speak to why you're doing that?
I thought I did.
Okay, that's fine. If you're done, that's fine.
Sure.
All right. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So there's going to be a restructuring in the Assessor's Office, and specifically, we would be reducing line 26 by $20,000. And we'll be funding a portion of the clerk wages from the Principal Assessor wage account.
All right.
So you took away $20,000.
Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I would just, my question to you is, line 31 in the budget is a total, and it is made up of the sum of lines 25 through 30. And so my question to you is, for clarity for the floor, could you please ask the members here to not make changes to a total, but to make changes to the individual lines that make up the total? Ms. Coughlin has clarified. Mr. Chaffee's motion was to change the subtotal, and she's told us which ones go.
You would like me to restrict any amendments to particular line items that have an account number rather than a total?
Well, more specifically to the non-total line items, because there are some lines here that do not have account numbers because they're new. Specifically, I'll call your attention to line 45.
Yeah.
That is a new account, and it is a subtotal, and so therefore, it should be modifiable. Unfortunately, there is no account number, so there was no account number to put into the budget when we made it.
I'm going to let the Select Board, they've already told me that we can amend any line here.
No. You can't amend the totals. You have to, we vote a line-by-line budget. You have to amend individual lines. You can't amend a total.
Okay. So which lines can we amend and which lines can we not amend?
You can amend anything except for a total. The totals are just subtotals.
And this is a total number that he's trying to amend, isn't that correct?
Yes. You can't amend a total. We vote a line-by-line budget.
So I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you the line items. I just need a minute to go over them.
Okay. Let's just hang on. This is what I thought, and I want to make sure that we're very clear on what we're doing. Individual line items within sort of a block of lines like total assessors, we've got, you know, assessors' stipends, principal, Assessor wages, all those sorts of things. You can amend those lines, but you cannot amend the total. So you reduce this line, Mr. Selectman, by about $20,000, it looks like. What I need you to do is go through line by line and tell us which lines you would like to amend so that the total is reduced. Is that, that's what you're looking for?
That is my request, Mr. Moderator.
Very good.
And if I may point out that at the end of a group, if it's, for example, it says total assessors, that indicates the lines are total versus compared to-
Very good. That's very good.
-line 64, which is also bolded but sits by itself. That line 64 would be a modifiable number.
Yeah.
So in general, if the description is total.
I got it. I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. While they're sort of trying to figure out what to do with lines 25 through 30, is there any other lines on this page, lines 25 through 49, that people would like to make an amendment to or get some information on as to whether they want to amend?
44, 35.
I don't hear any. So I'm sort of inclined to go to the next set of lines, which I'm going to do. All right. I'm turning the page. We're going to come back, so keep your finger on the page. Anybody have any thoughts to amend lines 50 through 70? Lines 50 through 70. Hearing none? I'm moving forward. Lines 71 through 95. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I have a question.
Yes.
You said through 70, but that group goes through 73.
All right. So you're going to have them-
Okay. Is there a reason that we're doing it by page? Is the object of the town meeting as starting the budget to be expeditions or to make good decisions?
Both.
And either.
So why can't we do it line by line?
Because I've already stated how I'm going to do it, and that is the end.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
May I go through you to ask the town meeting a question?
No, you may not. Well, yes, you can. Yeah. What's your question?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to know from all the people here, who has had an opportunity to review-
No, that's not a question. No, everybody, no, it's not.
So we come here without knowing anything, and we have to vote on 25 lines without an opportunity of looking at everyone. That's your position, sir?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry. You are all done for now for that question, so thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Who's speaking? Oh, there we go.
If I could speak to the town, two years running, again, the Advisory Committee and the Select Board put in hours and hours and hours going through this budget. For the last two years, we have had town-publicized presentations two to three weeks prior to this meeting, of which the first year, six people showed up. The second year, nine people showed up.
Okay. No, no, I'm done. No, I'm not going to go there.
There's been plenty of time to look at this. It's been mailed out also.
No, I'm all done. No, please stop. All right. Are there any questions on lines 71 through 95? All right. Are you guys ready for those lines? Okay. We're going to go back to lines 25 through 31, and we're going to get what I think is going to be, or should be, a group of amendments, or one amendment for a group of lines, shall we say.
So I would like line item 25 to read $1,800. Line item 26 to read $0. Line item 27 to read $35,000. 28 to read 1,000. 29, $2,530. And 30, $31,303.08 to total-
Repeat that. $31,000 what?
$31,303.08 to have a grand total of $71,603.08.
There is a motion to amend, I'm just going to say, lines 25 through 30. Line 25, the motion is, would like it to be $1,800. Line 26, $0. Line 27, $35,000. Line 28, $1,000. Line 29, $2,500. Line 30, $31,303.08. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. Is there any debate or discussion?
Sharon Mahoney, 130 Long Hill Road. I, through the moderator, I have a question for Mr. Chaffee, and I would like to know why we're increasing expenses to the tune of $30,000 and change. Thank you.
That is the fee for the subcontractor that's now going to do it. Instead of having a line item of $61,946 to pay the Principal Assessor that retired, that's what it would have been, we have now subcontracted it out to the tune of $31,000 to cut that position almost in half.
That's exactly the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. Any further debate or discussion on the motion to amend line items 25 through 30? Yep. By the way- By the way, I, while you're making your way up, can everybody hear Richard in the back okay? Okay, it's fine. I have a hard time hearing him. I don't know, you know, it's like, maybe because I'm on the other side of the microphone.
We're just getting to that age.
Yeah, I know, I get it. Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Moderator, to, uh, Mr. Selectman Chaffee, you are contracted for thirty one thousand to have, uh, a subcontract to come in to do the assessor's work. But that, is that totally eliminating any other expenses? Because you have a line item here of fifty three fifteen for expenses for the assessor's office, which would mean that you would use your entire expense budget for just the contractor? So, uh, there's no, there wouldn't be any wiggle room if you had some, you know, expenses?
So, the contract that we have is a sliding scale, and it depends on how many building permits are issued, how many inspections they do. We anticipate it's, uh, subcontractor fee would be twenty one thousand two hundred and fifty, and we have other fees with that to total to thirty five thousand, or not twenty five thousand, thirty one thousand three hundred and three. So, we kind of loop two of them together.
Sure. Okay, um, Mr. Moderator, through the Board of Selectmen, can we, um, separate that, those items in the future for our budget so that we know that, um, one amount is the contractor, one amount is the actual expenses that the ass, the assessor's office actually uses?
Yes.
So, we have an idea without having to ask for the figure. It's right there.
We can talk about that. We're not gonna commit to it here.
Well, I do wanna let you know that the primary assessor leaving, the principal assessor recently left. We've been scrambling to hire someone and to get a subcontractor in, so I apologize, but we just met on this on Tuesday to kind of finalize it.
That's fine, but I think in the future, it would be nice if it was, you know.
Agreed.
Sub, you know, subdivided in the budget so that we can see what we're actually spending on subcontractors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Moderator?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Moderator, I do just wanna caution everybody that when we start subdividing the budget to, there's like this weird balance we have to set. So, 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 and anything stated here doesn't commit a future penalty.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. That's something for the select board to take up outside of this meeting. That is not a, that's not a part of this particular meeting. You've heard the request, and you folks now can take that, take that, uh, take that to your office and, and figure out what you want to do with that. Anything else? We have, uh, an amendment, uh, on the floor for line items twenty five through thirty, twenty five being eighteen hundred, twenty six, zero, twenty seven, thirty five thousand, twenty eight, one thousand, twenty nine, twenty five hundred dollars, and line number thirty, thirty one thousand three hundred and three dollars and eight cents. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend those numbers? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? Uh, the ayes have it. The motion to amend has been adopted. All right. We left off, I believe, uh, on page number four, uh, and just to kind of go back through it, lines number seventy one through line ninety five. Is there anybody, uh, that has a question or would like to amend, uh, any of those line items? Hearing none, I am going to move to the next page, which is lines number ninety six through one hundred and sixteen. Ninety six through one hundred and sixteen. Anybody have any thoughts about amending or questions of why something is? Hearing none, uh, I'm gonna move on to lines numbers one seventeen to one thirty eight. Line numbers one hundred and seventeen to line number one hundred and thirty eight. Anybody have, uh, any, uh, thoughts about amending any of those numbers? Hearing none, I'm gonna move to lines one thirty nine to one hundred and sixty three. One thirty nine to one sixty three. Yeah.
Hi, Shelby Hill for Lincoln Street Extension. I have a question in regards to line one sixty, the library director wages. From what I could see, there was, there's a COLA for four point zero for everybody, for all the wages, for everybody across the board. It looks like the library director is at three point two, so I'm just calling, I'm seeing if there's any clarification on that.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah?
Uh, through you, the select board selected four percent, which is above the COLA.
Okay.
The library director's contract, I believe, stipulates that, uh, she will receive COLA, which is three point two. So, that is what the number that is indicated in the line item.
Okay.
That's the best of my knowledge.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for now. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else on line numbers one thirty nine to one sixty three? Hearing none, I'm gonna move to lines one sixty four through one eighty six. One sixty four to one eighty six. Sure.
Shelby Hill again for Lincoln Street Extension. Line number one sixty eight, the longevity director. Currently, it looks like they're, it kind of looks like she's gonna, um, Brenda is getting an increase of sixty six point seven, sixty seven percent. I'm gonna ask to see, I don't know if this is possible or not. It looks like the twenty five hundred that, for FY twenty five is twenty five hundred, that is actually, it includes the longevity assistant directors for a thousand dollars. So, I didn't know if that, could that be broken down at all so that it, because right now, it looks like it's just for the director, and instead of the director and the assistant. So, it kind of looks like she's getting more.
Just to longevity library.
Yeah.
Do we have an answer?
Yeah, per, per the accountant, she says that the most straightforward way to address that would be to change that to reflect just library longevity. Take the director name out of it so that it's clear it's for all the applicable library employees.
All right. Okay, that's fair. I just wanted to make sure, because it does look like it's a really large increase, but she's not actually getting that full thing. Okay, awesome. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on line numbers, uh, one sixty four to one eighty six? Yeah.
Mr. Moderator, Tom Regan, six Mockingbird Lane, uh, for line one sixty eight, I move that we revise the description from longevity director to longevity library staff.
Hang on. So, there's a motion that's been made to strike the description longevity director, insert, uh, longevity library staff. Is that, is that what you want? Is there a second to the motion? Uh, hang on, one second. Okay. Go ahead. Debate. Make your argument. If you want to. You don't have to if you don't want to.
Consistent with the discussion that happened, let's make the change happen. Thank you.
There you go. Any further discussion, uh, on the motion to amend, uh, the description of line one sixty eight from longevity director to longevity library staff? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Uh, the motion is adopted. Um, who said no?
Are you?
Is he, is he a citizen?
Yes, I'm a Brookfield resident. I just found this place and said even with the voting behind me, the way I've been voted, that's fair.
Yeah, okay. And, and that's, that's accurate, correct? He's, he's, okay, good, good, good. I can't see you, so it's like, I'm looking at a poll. I like to look at somebody when I'm talking to them. That's fine, thank you. Just wanted to be sure. I heard it coming from over there. I'm like, oh, wait a second. Somebody cheating over there? All right, thank you. All right. Uh, so, uh, we have amended line one sixty eight, the description to longevity library staff. Is there anything else in line numbers one sixty four to one eighty six? Hearing none, uh, line numbers one eighty seven, uh, to two hundred and three. Anything further? One eighty seven to two oh three. All right. Uh, I don't hear any, uh, so I need a, I need a number. So, I forgot the main motion. Uh, the motion is to adopt the budget, uh, as, as, as amended for a, a total of ten million dollars, four hundred and sixty two thousand, three hundred and eighty three dollars and sixty nine cents. Is there any further discussion, uh, on the budget? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. The, the budget has been adopted. Thank you. All right. Article number three.
Mr. Up, Moderator, I move that the town transfer nine thousand three hundred and seventy one dollars and six cents from free cash to pay the following prior year's bills, Catalyst Tax and KAMA Inc., eighty five hundred for assessing software, Local IQ New England, one hundred and forty six dollars and six cents for newspaper hearing notices, Atlas Technical Consultants, seven hundred and twenty five dollars for repeat while testing.
A motion has been made that the town transfer nine thousand three hundred and thirty one dollars and six cents from free cash to pay the following prior year's bills as they are printed there, Catalyst Tax, C A M A, Local IQ New England, Atlas Technical Consultants. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. This will require, uh, a four-fifths vote, okay, which is eighty percent of you gotta say yes if we're gonna adopt this thing. Okay? All right. Is there any discussion on, on the motion? The dollar amounts. So, Catalyst Tax and C A M A Incorporated, it's eighty five hundred dollars for assessing software, Local IQ New England, one hundred, oh, the total, I'm sorry, nine thousand three hundred and seventy one dollars and six cents. Is that, is that right? All right. Any debate? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Uh, we're gonna pay last year's bills. Article number four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer forty thousand dollars from the Water Department Water Surplus Account to the Water Department Water Systems Capital Expense Account.
A motion has been made to transfer forty thousand dollars from the Water Department Water Surplus Account to the Water Department Water Systems Capital Expense Account. Is there a second? There is a second. Uh, is there any discussion or debate, uh, on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved fund to fund the fiscal twenty twenty five ambulance expense account.
A motion has been made to transfer fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved fund to fund the fiscal twenty twenty five ambulance expense account. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on transferring fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty five bucks from the ambulance receipts reserved fund to the, to, for, to fund the fiscal twenty twenty five ambulance expense account? Any debate? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Article number six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer two hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and thirty one dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved fund to fund the fiscal twenty twenty five ambulance wages account.
Could you please give me that number again?
Two hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and thirty one dollars.
A motion has been made that the town transfer two hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and thirty one dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved fund to fund the fiscal twenty twenty five ambulance wages account. Is there a second? There's a second. Uh, is there any debate, uh, on transferring two hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and thirty one bucks from the ambulance receipts reserved fund, uh, to fund the fiscal twenty twenty five ambulance wages account? Any debate? If, you, you're gonna need to come to the microphone? I know. Stinks. Although, I kind of like it.
Mary Fagno, seven Green Street. Um, why is the number in the book different than what she, um, stated?
Got an answer? Why is the number different? Oh. You, you're gonna have to, yeah, I'm sorry. You gotta. You need the exercise. Come on. Well, I know you don't. I'm sure you don't.
That amount was submitted several months ago, and it didn't include the four percent raise, and there's been an increase in the ambulance calls, so that's, accounts for the other three percent.
Okay.
So, it's a total of seven percent increase.
Okay. Any further, any further debate or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer eighteen thousand from ambulance receipt reserve fund to cover a deficit in fiscal year twenty twenty four ambulance wages account.
A motion has been made to transfer eighteen thousand dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved fund to cover a deficit in the fiscal year twenty twenty four ambulance wages budget. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any debate on the motion to transfer eighteen thousand dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved fund to cover a deficit in the fiscal year twenty twenty four ambulance wages account? Any debate? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Article number eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer twenty five thousand dollars from free cash to purchase protective clothing for the fire department.
A motion has been made to transfer twenty five thousand dollars from free cash to purchase protective clothing, uh, for the fire department. Is there a second? I heard a second. Uh, okay. Is there any debate on spending twenty five thousand bucks on, on protective clothing for the fire department?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. How many, uh, how many, how many of, how much clothing is, how many clothes, is this clothing? How many firemen is this gonna take care of? And, uh, had, didn't we support this a couple of years ago also? I just wonder how much money we're spending on the firemen's clothes, and how many firemen is this gonna take care of?
Do we have a, do we have someone that's gonna answer that? Chief?
Hi. Through the chair, essentially, without being too facetious, all the firefighters, because as the year goes on, stuff does need to be replaced. Requirements now are in place at a federal level, and because we're an OSHA state, everything has to be replaced every ten years anyway, and we don't replace it all at once, otherwise, that would be a lot more than twenty five thousand. But as the year goes on, we put new members on. They need a helmet at four hundred dollars. They need a hood at two hundred dollars. They need two pairs of gloves at one hundred and eighty dollars each. They lose, they rip a pair of gloves. The coats are just under two thousand. The pants are just under two thousand. Firefighters cannot attend, pardon me, uh, certain trainings without that gear being compliant, and they definitely can't go into hazardous conditions in those things. So, They definitely can't go into hazardous conditions and those things. So the simple answer on it is, it affects everybody, because as the year goes on, they're gonna need gloves. They're gonna need boots. And everybody, there are some, some firefighters on staff that don't have the proper equipment right now. And we're also anticipating as the year goes on. We know exactly how old the stuff is, and we can add 10. So we're looking forward through that. We're using some state money to take care of some needs now. But as the year goes on, we have helmets that need to be replaced, again, at 400-ish. Maybe that's wrong. It ain't cheap. And again, it's just, as it goes on, we just need to stay ahead of it to keep the firefighters at the point where they're protected, and also they can participate in training in compliance with Mass. OSHA.
Okay. That's about, that's about it for time. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further debate on transferring $25,000 from free cash to purchase protective clothing for the fire department? Hearing none. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $82,000 from free cash to the Equipment Replace Repair Account to fund future equipment repair or replace needs.
A motion has been made to transfer $82,000 from free cash to the Equipment Replace/Repair Account to fund future equipment repair or replacement needs. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any debate on the motion to transfer $82,000 from free cash to the, to the Equipment Replace and Repair Account? Debate?
Sean Mulligan, 17 River Street. I see that this is not recommended by the Advisory Committee by three to two, and I'd like to hear the, from an Advisory Board member about their objections to this. Thank you.
We're looking for the objections, so I believe...
Yeah, Sean. I think the issue is, we were more interested in the, the actual wording of the language versus the $82,000, because it was, originally came to the Advisory Committee in the town as a requirement for a larger air compressor, so they can refill the tanks all the time. And we wanted it allocated to that. And this just says future equipment repair, so it can be spent on anything. That was the only, that was the reason for our, I mean, the, the need is there, and we wanted to make sure it went to that need. So I think that was just, it's the difference in the wording of the article, I think, that we had the challenge with.
That make sense? Or does that take your question? All right. Any further debate?
So can the Advisory Committee, oh, this is Sherry Zitter from Lake Road. Can the Advisory Committee put in an amendment to change the wording to your liking, or does a citizen have to offer an amendment?
So, Mr. Moderator, through you.
Yeah.
If I may. So it could be amended by either the Advisory Committee or by somebody from the floor, but I would like to speak to why the verbiage was changed to what it is. Okay? So the initial issue before both ourselves and the Advisory Committee was the replacement of the current air compressor at the fire station that loads their bottles. It's currently operating, and Chief, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's roughly 35 years old, or...
20.
Or is it older than that?
20.
20. It's 20 years old? 25. Okay. 25 years old. As a 25-year-old compressor, if it quits on us, it's unlikely that we can find somebody to just repair it. Okay? A lot of the parts are out of service, that sort of thing. This does, however, give us the flexibility that should it fail, it could be repaired instead of replaced, okay? Or if it makes it through the year, the funding is still there on the article, still there in the account. The question really before the town meeting today is, once this money is in the account, yes, it can be moved at a simple vote of the Select Board. And the typical procedure is that before the Select Board would do that, whatever issue was taken up by the Select Board would be passed to the Advisory, at least for them to advise on whether we should do it or not. Okay? So the question before you is, do you trust us to spend it with the precedence to the compressor? But if something else in our fleet of, a lot of our equipment is not shiny and new in this town, decides to blow up instead, it gives us the flexibility to actually do the work that we need to do to support the town. So you can either amend it, tie the hands, or leave it as is. Sorry.
Pretty much at this point, time, time, time's done. So, you know, whatever. Any, any, any...
I thought it was, oh, I'm sorry.
What's that?
I thought, I didn't realize it was...
No, that's the, that's the, no, that's the, no, that's your, that's your timeout. That's your timeout sound. I figured I'd rather do that. It's easier than me having to, I feel guilty shutting people down. That's right. That's right. It's much easier.
That's okay.
It's much easier, you know? So anyway. All right. Any further debate?
My question is, is why are we taking it out of free cash and not raising and appropriating? I mean, there hasn't been any mention of how much free cash we have tonight. So that would be nice for the people who are out here voting, is if we knew how much free cash the town has before we go and decide to spend any of it. So I guess that's my question is, to the town accountant, how much free cash do we have before we spend some?
We, the certified free cash was $544,490.
And how much do we have in there before that? Is that all of it?
No, that's, that's your starting balance. That's what, exactly what was certified. We had spent none before we got here tonight.
Okay. So why are we taking it out of free cash and not raising and appropriating?
So prior to making the amendment to the budget of $20,000, we only had about $62,000 of excess levy capacity. So that would be the maximum possible amount that you could raise and appropriate. Now we have about $82,000, and that's if nothing else changes. But the state budget numbers are still not finalized. So to raise and appropriate every last penny at this point is still not a great idea, because the state has not finalized their budget, which is where a large portion of our revenue comes in from.
And I understand from the state that the numbers are gonna be much lower this year than they have been in previous years.
They are. And I used the mid numbers that have come through so far, so I'm not using the high numbers, because the high numbers never get passed.
Right. So...
So leaving some excess levy capacity is a good idea at this point.
Why is our budget so high this year that we are, we're within $60,000 of our levy limit?
So, we've already adopted the budget, so I...
But these articles are also included in this budget. So when they figured out the $60,000 bill, they included all of these numbers either being raised and appropriated, coming out of free cash, when they're saying to us that we only have $60,000 to play with. So, yes, it is, it is a legitimate question. Why are we so close in our budget?
So, again, you're talking about a very specific item about a budget. This is not the budget. We've already decided on the budget, and so I'm not gonna take any further discussion on the budget, and your time's up.
Okay. But anything that's raised and appropriated from these articles is part of the budget.
This is free cash, if I understand it.
Yes.
This one particular article.
Okay.
Okay. So what I'm asking is, why is our levy limit, why are we so close to our levy limit?
I don't, no, that's, that's outside the, that's out...
I don't think so. Point of order. It's a legitimate question, and it deserves an answer.
I'm, I'm sorry. It is outside the, the relevance of the motion that is on the floor.
Okay. So the next one that comes up, that is a raise and appropriate, I will ask that question. Because then it will be appropriate.
Okay. You're done. Thank you. All right. Is there any further debate? Any further debate on a motion to transfer $82,000 from free cash to the Equipment Replace, am I on the right one? Replace Repair Account to fund future equipment repair or replacement needs. Any further debate? Hearing none. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed say no.
No.
Oh, I like that aye out there. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash $11,000 to purchase a thermal imager for the fire department.
Motion has been made to transfer from free cash $11,000 to purchase a thermal imager for the fire department. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there any debate?
Ladies and gentlemen of the panel, illustrious moderator. My name is Gary. I live in Allen Road.
Could you, could you step a little closer? There you go.
Name is Gary on Allen Road. My question on the thermal imager is twofold. Number one, has it gone out to, for bid? Number two, related to that, what model are they anticipating getting? And number three, what security devices are they gonna utilize to prevent it being stolen or misused? Those things are dynamite. You've got someone with a thermal imager coming after you, you better hope you have good insurance.
Does anybody have any answers to his questions? Could you just, I'm gonna pause this. Could you just repeat the questions?
What model thermal imagers are they going to get?
Model.
Yeah. Binocular, monocular.
Yeah. Bidding process, I think you mentioned?
What?
Did you mention bidding process?
Yeah. Sometimes you put things out for a bid.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. And then...
And third, what type of security arrangements are you gonna have for...
All right. Security.
For that particular unit?
Thank you.
They're, they're, Chief, in high demand.
Yeah. Chief, do you got any answers to the questions? Do the best you can.
It hasn't gone out to bid because I don't have the money yet. When it does go out to bid, I would have the option of using bid, using a state bid list where vendors and models are, are vetted. I can throw out a couple of names, but that wouldn't be appropriate. But, and these are fire service-specific ones. I know that law enforcement has other uses for them. This isn't the case. They...
So you're looking for broad spectrum?
Yeah. It's, it's a handheld thing. Looks like, the old ones look like camcorders, and I just lost half the room by saying camcorder. But yeah, they're handheld, and they're just picking up heat signature either directly or through something. It's not like law enforcement would use to track somebody. That's more of a...
And, hold on, hold on. I don't want the discussion going on. Just let him, let him finish out here. You can come back. You've got some time. I'm not, I'm not, I just...
But yeah, it, okay. It hasn't gone out to bid because we don't have the money.
What about security on the unit?
Security on the unit would, it would only be used at fires. We try, going back to Columbine, we try not to use our equipment for law enforcement endeavors. You know, it's a whole Posse Cum Montaustas-type thing. But yeah, it's, it wouldn't be used for a search. It would be used for a search for a missing person, or somebody ejected from a motor vehicle, but not somebody that's fleeing a motor vehicle accident or stop or anything like that. If that's, if that's where you're looking, more of a privacy security rather than locking key.
I think, I think what he's really interested in is, the value of this thing is very high, and he's worried about it getting swiped. I mean, did I get that wrong, or?
It'll, it'll be mounted on a charger in the vehicle. The vehicle is fully attended when it's on a scene, and it's locked up in the station when it's there. So we got a lot of stuff that's even more expensive. Probably not a safe. They would be mounted in the vehicle the same way the current ones are. So...
Okay. Any further debate on the question? The motion is to transfer from free cash $11,000 to purchase a thermal imager for the fire department. Is there any further debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion's adopted. Article number 11.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $24,318.26 from the balances of several fire department accounts to a fire department building, repair, and maintenance account. For maintenance and repairs of the building include pest control and remediation as printed in Article 11 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion has been made to transfer $24,318.26 from the balances of several fire department accounts to a fire department building, repair, and maintenance account for maintenance and repairs of the building, including pest control and remediation as printed in Article 11 of the town meeting warrant. I have those numbers in front of me. I assume all of you do. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any debate?
I would like to offer an amendment to that, if I may, because I just saw the language, not to reopen that argument.
Peter, could you speak into the mic? Yeah, thank you. That's good. You're good and close.
Okay. I would like to change the wording, starting with the word "to," quote, "to a fire department building, repair, and maintenance account for the maintenance, repairs, and improvements of the building." Or take any action, well, no, you don't do that. Pest control and remediation weren't part of it. Were, were pretty much rat-free, so that wasn't part of it.
Hold, hold on, hold on one second. Let me just make sure that I got what you're doing here. You want, you want...
I'm changing it from maintenance and repairs to maintenance, repairs, and upgrades, and I'm limiting the term pest control or remediation.
Oh.
I don't know how that made it through.
So hold on one second. I just wanna make sure that I get this correct. Okay? All right. So repairs of the building, including?
May, before include...
For maintenance repairs...
Maintenance, repairs, and upgrades of the building. Stop.
And... Upgrades, sorry, of... The building. Period. So you want the motion to read, you want to amend this thing so that it reads, "Transfer $24,318.26 from the balances of several fire department accounts to a fire department building, repair, and maintenance account for maintenance and repairs of..."
And upgrades.
Maintenance and repairs and upgrades of the building. Period. That's what you're seeking to do. Hold on one moment. Town Council's got my ear.
Yes.
Hang on. So, hang on. So this, right here, needs to go, there's my thing. Okay. All right. So... Hang on. So, there's just a motion to amend the wording of this thing, obviously. Town Council is telling me we need to do something in addition to what you're asking us to do. So what I'd like to do is sort of combine the two, because they're sort of related, all right? And so what Council is telling me is that she would like me to move the words, and this is for everybody. She wants me to move the words as printed in Article 11 of the town meeting warrant, and where it is to right after the department, fire department building, repair, and maintenance account. All right? So the motions, sorry about this. The amendment, or if the amendment is adopted, which we haven't even gotten there yet, but we're looking to change this so that it reads that the town transfer $24,318.26 from the balances of several fire department accounts to a fire department building, repair, and maintenance account as printed in Article 11 of the annual town meeting warrant for maintenance, repairs, and upgrades of the building. Is there a second to that motion to amend?
Second.
I hear a second. Is there any further debate? Someone from behind you, and then...
Is, is this a new account? Is this a new account that we're starting? Okay. How many, I mean, we've got, how many accounts are we gonna have in this town? We're gonna have account for this, that, maintenance for this, this building, that building. What is the purpose behind having this, a special accountant on this one?
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Moderator, this actually simplifies and does a bunch of account cleanup. If you notice, there are five previously voted at annual town meeting accounts that have residual funds. What this does is aggr... What this does is aggregates all those funds into a single general purpose upgrade, maintenance, and repair account to handle additional things at the fire station without costing the town an additional penny that has not already been voted at a town meeting for the purpose of upgrading the fire facilities.
We already allocated, we already allocated the money for the repairs. This is money that is left over. Just put it back in the general fund. We don't need another fund. We have so many funds now. It's unbelievable.
Peter, why do we have $24,318.26 left over from last year's budget? And you're asking us for $11,000 for a thermal thing? And you're asking us for money for the, more equipment? And you're asking us for money for this, but you've got $24,000 left from last year that you didn't spend? How come?
Can you answer that? Get to the microphone, please. Thank you.
If I may, we did due diligence when we ended up with $1,723.02 in repairs. We came in under budget on overhead doors, because I went out to bid. We came in under budget on the generator. The defibrillators, by getting as many as we did, we got a price break on that, so. And we assess needs as we went along on that. So, we were able to save money and spend your money effectively, so we end up with money left over. We could have turned this back to free cash. We wouldn't have seen it for another year, and I still would have needed work done on the station, so.
Did you reduce your budget this year, Peter, for the 2025 year, knowing that you were short?
That question's already been answered. That question's already been answered. We adopted a budget that had that number in there.
Did you, it's a legitimate question. Did you reduce your budget for the 2025 year?
It's clear that he did not.
For these accounts that you want to transfer the money out of?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. These were not operational budget accounts. These were funds that were established by warrant article votes for explicit capital expenses, for one-time expenses, not ongoing budget needs. And so we're repurposing the one-time funds that were not expended for those one-time instances into a general fund for this year. Thanks.
Mr. Moderator?
That's it. No, we're done.
My opinion is that?
No, you're done. Excuse me. You're done. Please sit down.
I'll let my husband answer the question.
Is there any further debate? The motion on the floor is to transfer $24,318.26 from the balances of several fire department accounts to a fire department building repair and maintenance account as printed in Article 11 of the, of the annual town meeting warrant for maintenance, repairs, and upgrade of the building. Is there any further debate? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $10,000 from free cash fund to the center line painting for the town roads.
Motion has been made to transfer $10,000 from free cash to fund the center line painting of town roads. Is there a second? I hear a second. Is there any debate on the motion to transfer $10,000 bucks from free cash to fund center line painting of town roads? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. We're going to paint some town lines, lines and town roads. Article number 13.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $79,000 from free cash to fund the road reconstruction and reconstruction account.
There's a motion that's been made to, that the town transfers $79,000 from free cash to fund the road construction and reconstruction account. Is there a second? There's a second. Is there any debate on the motion to transfer $79,000 bucks from free cash to fund the road construction and reconstruction account?
Mr. Moderator, Don Taff, Lane 21. I'd like a clarification on this since the, it says it's $54,000, which is for the paving on Green Street. The paving on Green Street was part of a project contract that was funded in FY '24. The project did not go up in expenses. I'd like to know where the $54,000 went that was voted on and the contract was signed.
Can someone answer that?
There was never $54,000 ever allocated to Green Street. There was chalk that it was going to be paid for out of ARPA, but there was never an actual Board of Selectmen vote to allocate the funds from ARPA. So the $54,000 is our, the town portion to finish the Green Street project.
Any further debate? You got about a minute.
So this is coming out of the road construction fund now?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's taking away from highways funds for this year?
The motion is to take money from free cash and put it into the road construction and reconstruction account.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, just, yeah, just to clarify.
Mr.?
This is fiscal '25 money we're talking about. I thought this project was to be concluded for the residents of Green Street, like now.
I can clarify that. We still have $55,000 in the road reconstruction account right now, so this will replace the money that we're going to spend on Green Street.
So it really has nothing to do with Green Street. You've got that money already.
Right, but the $54,000 extra that we're putting in is to replace the money we're going to spend immediately.
So, O'Kra. We still got $25,000. How come, how come we're short with the $25,000? What I understand, when this grant was taken, it was supposed to be 100% to take care of Green Street with the drains, paving, and, and doing the water lines over. Now we're coming up short, saying, oh, we're going to have money coming out of free cash to pave it? That's what I understand, and I was told when you guys did this grant. Now you're changing it all. And where's the $25,000? What's, what's that for? You've told us what the $54,000 is. Now what's the $25,000 for? Now you're short.
The $25,000 is the regular allocation that we normally put into the road reconstruction account every year. So that's just the standard money we put in every year to have. The $54,000 from reading through everything we had from the grant was always supposed to be the town's responsibility.
Now, we usually vote separately for the town, the highway, to get road construction, bridge repair. That's usually a line item by itself. It's kind of getting mingled in here with Green Street here on this grant. That's why I'm, I'm just kind of wondering why this is taking place.
We put in the additional information that Green Street was $54,000 just to make, have everyone make sense of the $79,000 we were putting in, which was the 54 plus our standard allocation that we normally do of 25, to cover the money that I'm going to use out of what is left in fiscal year '24, because I'm going to use all of the money that we have remaining.
Okay.
Herb Chafee. If you don't use the road reconstruction money to pay for bills, what are you going to do with the $79,000 that's going to be on top of what's in there now?
So the money that's in, that is, the $79,000 that is going to go into the road reconstruction account, which will become the new balance in the account, because I'm going to spend all that's in there right now, is at the discretion of the highway department. I only approve their bills for payment.
So I guess the question that I'm asking is, if you do not have to use road reconstruction on Green Street to pay bills, what's going to happen with that money?
Well, I have to use the $54,000 to pay for the paving, which is scheduled already. So that will leave us a balance of $79,000 if approved tonight, because I'm using, $79,000 isn't available to us until July 1st, because this is a fiscal year '25 town meeting. So I'm, we currently have a balance of $55,000 in the account, so I'm emptying their account out right now to pay for Green Street, because the project is scheduled to go, I believe, in a week.
I've asked before, how much money do we have in Chapter 90 for the highway department?
That, I'm not sure. The highway superintendent would have to.
So I can, I can give you that number, Mr. Chafee. So there's $454,000 roughly in Chapter 90 right now.
So why didn't we do a project request with Chapter 90 money with this grant?
I don't, I don't believe it was eligible, but the highway department.
I guarantee it's eligible. Because it's been done before in Brookfield with Chapter 90 and a grant.
Okay.
I don't know.
You have any further questions or?
I don't think we should vote for this.
Okay. Any further, any further debate on the motion? The motion is to transfer $79,000 from free cash to fund the road construction and reconstruction account. Is there any further debate? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 14.
Mr. Moderator, through you. I'd like to have a hand count on that motion, please.
Very good. I, I just want to ask everybody, all those in favor, just stand. If you're in favor, just stand. I don't want to count right at the moment. Just stand. All right, thank you. Please sit down. All opposed, please stand. I need a count. What's that? Oh, everybody, please sit down. Sorry about that. I just wanted to get a visual of what it looked like. I still believe my call is correct, but there is, somebody does want to count, so my counters, I'm going to need you to come forward, just come on up here and, and get yourselves ready. And then I'm going to ask everyone who voted yes. Yeah? Every, okay, all those in favor, please rise. 29 and 25, okay? All those opposed, please stand. Don't forget to reset your counters to zero. 54 voted yes, 27 voted no. The motion is adopted. Article number 14.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $40,000 from free cash to purchase an updated fuel recording system, which would replace the current manual system.
Motion has been made to transfer $40,000 from free cash to purchase an updated fuel recording system, which would replace the current manual system. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Could the members of the advisory board, please keep it down? All right, a motion has been made and seconded to transfer $40,000 from free cash to purchase an updated fuel recording system, which would replace the current manual system. Is there any debate on the motion? Mr. Chafee had his hand up. I don't care. You guys figure it out.
Go ahead, Ms. O'Kra.
Could we hear from the highway superintendent on this, please? And my question is, what's the purpose of this and why is it such a high cost of allocating for fuel?
I actually have a two-part answer to this, Pete Florio, highway superintendent. I am in favor of the system, because it will provide accountability, security, and also for budgeting purposes. We'll have a better idea of what we use for fuel. Currently, we use a clipboard at the highway garage to keep track of gas and diesel. We have no idea what police and fire are using, so we're constantly filling the tanks. So at least this way, we would have accountability, where we would know what's in the tanks. The price tag on this, I have not had time to do more research on it. I'm confident that we can get it at a lower price. But again, I would have to put that out to get proposals. So, I don't know who put this amount in there. I know there was one quotation for it, which it does seem high to me. But overall, it would be a worthwhile system in the, in the, in the long term.
Then answer your?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I, for one, am not in favor of this. I have a 1,000 gallon fuel tank at my place. I use a notepad to keep track of it. It's a pretty simple system. $40,000, if we're losing 10 gallons a month, we could never recoup this cost. There's an annual cost to have this as well, once we do this. There's a software fee. This is not something the town needs. There's, there's better, there's better solutions. If we want to maintain the gasoline and know what's being spent, we get rid of the gas station entirely at the highway department. We give each policeman a card to go to the Cumberland Farms. We can keep a very accurate accounting system. We'll know which policeman is using what for fuel, for gasoline, and his very other little gasoline that's used in town. I am not in favor of this.
Okay.
Herb Chafee again. We've got a gas tank down there and a diesel tank, so there's two tanks, so everybody knows. The gasoline has a computer system on it, which is constantly, has to be looked at, repaired, and everything else, and it's very costly. To me, I think it's not worthwhile. And what's wrong with the pump that's there now? The accountability has been good for years. Now all of a sudden, it's bad? You know, my understanding, the locks have been changed. So, accountability with the department heads that have the locks now, have the keys for the locks.
I'm sorry, we've got somebody up here that's, that's, are you all set? I mean, you've still got more time. You got, you got, you know, another minute.
Your turn. No.
You're up.
Matthew Graves, Matthew Graves, Lane 23. Is this covering both gasoline and diesel pumps?
Looks like it's yes.
Because I was going to say, the gasoline pump has had a lot of issues in the past with that computer system. But again, like Rich said, 40 grand is a lot to spend, even if we're, what are we losing for fuel? Do we have an estimate on what we're losing for fuel that we're trying to cover?
Can somebody answer that?
I don't have an answer to that.
Anybody know how much fuel we're losing? Do you have an answer, Richard? I'm sorry.
Currently, even with the gas system, which is computerized, we have no idea, because it's not reporting. So we have no idea how much.
The answer is no. They don't know. Are you all set? You've got more time. Another minute.
I know for the ambulance and fire, fire departments both, we do keep a very detailed log every time we get fuel, which is probably just a communication thing that we need to improve between fire and highway. We also do use gasoline as well in fire.
Okay. Anybody else that wants to speak once? Richard, I'm sorry. I gotta, we gotta get through.
No, I'll be patient.
Come on, go ahead. Oh, chief?
Mike Blanchard. I, I was unaware that there was a question on what the police department uses for gas. We have a three-digit code for every cruiser, and we punch that in, in the gallons. If it's not getting reported, then, then that's, that's an issue. But I was unaware that you guys were not getting our fuel mileage or whatever.
I don't know that that's an issue.
I have a question for Pete.
I'm sorry, Mr. Eaton was, 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 had risen before chief. We'll, we'll come to you next, if that's all right.
Carmen Eaton, 13 West Main Street. There seems to be a lot of uncertainty and disagreement. There seems to be a lot of uncertainty and disagreement. I move we pass over this article until we get more quantifiable data on how much is used, how much it's going to cost.
Alright, so hold on a second. So you, what you really want to do is postpone this indefinitely, which will kill it, and then we'll take it up at some other time if it's, if it's so, if, if the meeting so desires. So, the motion to postpone indefinitely needs a second, and it is debated. So is there any second to the motion? There is a second to the motion. And it is debatable, all the way down to the merits of the question itself. So you can continue, Kermit. I mean, if you want to continue speaking in favor of your motion to postpone indefinitely.
I, I'm not for or against it at this point because I get confusing comments, so that's my, my issue.
Yeah, that's what the motion to postpone indefinitely is, is exactly for. Alright. Let's, right, right here.
I want to say, in speaking to the Highway Superintendent today, this was not his recommendation from day one. It was the prior county administrator. We don't even know why she brought it up. It wasn't an issue. We have cameras on the building, on all corners. It's not, my opinion, we're losing an ounce of fuel or gasoline. I trust all the employees. I don't think we have an issue. I think it would be a major waste of $40,000. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Holcraft?
Yeah, my question is, did you say we're passing this over or postponing it? Because your rules of engagement at the beginning of the meeting said we cannot pass over any article. Is that true?
She made a motion. That's a good question.
That's a very good question.
It's a very good question, Mr. Holcraft.
I'm paying attention, I'm paying attention. I pay attention.
Okay. She did try to make a motion to pass over. That is not a legitimate motion. However, what she was really looking to do was postpone it indefinitely, okay? Which is a legitimate motion. It's in almost every single manual of parliamentary procedure that I am aware of. If you can find one there it's not, let me know, and we, we can talk some more about it. So it's a legitimate motion, hang on, okay? And, and I want to make sure that everybody understands what this motion will do, okay? It basically just kills the article. We'll just, you know, it, no money will be spent, and we'll move right to the next article, okay? So, go ahead. Does that answer your question first?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disputing what you were going to do here, but I'm disputing that you said we couldn't pass over articles.
And we are not doing that.
In your manual, you said, no, we can't do it.
Now you're saying we can. I think I've made it clear that this is not a motion to pass over.
So what is it? You're postponing it?
Postponing it indefinitely.
Alright.
It is a legitimate motion in every single parliamentary manual that I am aware of.
Alright, so we're going to play with the words tonight, okay?
Sean Mulligan, 17 River Street. This sounds like an expensive solution to a problem that we haven't really identified. So I'm, I'm opposed to it as well.
Right here.
Yeah, I, we, the advisory committee did interview and talk with the acting director and the clerk at the Highway Department. So the, the premise isn't that anyone's stealing anything. The premise is to better manage costs for the town going forward as gas and oil prices continue to go up, down, all over the place. And, 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 and the reality is, the system they have now is an old DOS-based system. If the computer ever were to die, you would lose every, all the data you have, and, you know, hopefully people will still have their, their, you know, those, the, the pad and pencil, and they'll be able to recreate. But right now, it's a very tenuous system, and it's barely, barely holding on. But again, it's more about future, managing future costs, when to buy diesel, when to buy gas, you know, knowing how much exactly is in the tank. So if prices look high today, maybe we can wait a week and get another penny or two off. And when you're buying thousands of gallons, that's, that, so it's all, it's, it's all about managing costs. Now, is 40,000 the right number or not? I don't really know. And it sounds like our new super wants to look, you know, into it more. But I just want to give you that background as to why it came up in general. The dollar amount is a separate animal, but that's why it's on a warrant.
Did, did you want to, did you want to speak to this question? I'm sorry, I totally, I totally blew you off. I'm terribly sorry about that.
No, so my question was for Pete. I just asked, so currently combined, the expense, if you add your diesel fuel and your gasoline fuel is $55,175. So my question is, is the goal to eventually find out and separate into and have the police create an expense and a line item for their gasoline, or are you going to keep it?
We could.
At this 55,175?
We could go either way with that, but that's also an estimated number.
Okay.
Until we have an actual gallon amount, you know, usage per year.
Okay.
That would help us get a, a better handle on budgeting purposes.
Okay, and you're expending this, correct? This 55,000 right now?
I am not sure at this point.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly where we're at budget-wise.
Yeah.
Point of order.
Yeah.
The motion to.
Postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely is, is on the table here. Shouldn't those be questions that we should be asking about? Not all these other questions about the gasoline pumps and yada, yada, yada?
Like I said, the motion to postpone indefinitely is a debatable motion, and it is debatable right down to the merits of the underlying question, which is whether or not to spend $40,000 out of free cash on an updated fuel recording system. So yes, the questions are legitimate. Has your question been answered?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Anybody else that wants to speak to this? Yeah, go ahead. You were, you were, yeah.
So we want to spend $40,000 on two pumps right now. So every eight to 10 years, we're going to spend another $40,000. Because that one that's down there right now is probably about 10 or 12 years old for the gasoline pump. So, and we spent 30 grand on that.
Okay.
So.
I want to make a correction. So the 40 grand is not for the pump itself, it's for the system also. So we're, they're upgrading the computer system also, so I just want to make that point. It's not just the pump.
Alright. Mr. Chafee?
Our annual usage is $55,000. We're going to spend $40,000 to track it, and then we're going to pay for the software every year after that? Are we crazy?
Again, selectman Chafee, I also have to look into other companies where there is no annual fee.
Okay.
We can also get cards, we can also get cards at Cumberland Farms for free.
Yeah. Okay, Richard, are you all done?
Yes.
Alright. Go ahead.
Can I make a motion to move the question?
Uh, yes, you may. There is a motion to move the previous question, which is ultimately to close debate. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, this requires a two-thirds vote, okay? So, all those in favor of closing debate, so what's going to happen here is if we vote yes, debate's going to be over, and we're going to vote on the underlying question of whether to spend 40,000 bucks, 40,000 bucks on this updated fuel system. Alright? So, if you want to close debate, you'll say yes. If you don't want to close debate and you want to continue, say no. All those in favor of closing debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. We are going to vote on the underlying question, which is to postpone indefinitely the motion to transfer $40,000 from free cash to purchase an updated fuel recording system which would replace the current manual system. If you vote yes, this motion will be dead and we will move on. If you vote no, we will continue to debate this question and vote again. So, if you want it to die, vote yes. If you don't want it to die, vote no. Everybody clear? All those in favor of postponing this motion indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to postponing indefinitely, say no. The ayes have it. This motion is postponed indefinitely. We are moving on to article number 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $3,000 from free cash to purchase gravel for the purpose of making various repairs for private roads that meet the town bylaw requirements.
Motion has been made to transfer 3,000 bucks from free cash to purchase gravel for the purpose of making various repairs for private roads that meet the town bylaw requirements. Is there a second? Is there any debate on the motion to transfer 3,000 bucks from free cash to purchase gravel for, for the purchase of making various repairs of private roads that meet town bylaw requirements? Mr. Chafee?
I don't believe the 3,000 that we appropriated last year has been spent, but I could be wrong. But if, if it hasn't, I would like to pass over the article, or, or make a motion.
To postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely.
There is a motion that's been made to postpone this motion indefinitely. Is there a second to the motion? There is a second. So, as we did before, the motion to postpone indefinitely is fully debatable down to the merits of the question. If you, if you are in favor of postponing it, and if you are in favor of killing this motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to it, you will vote no. Alright? So we are now going to, we, hold on, hold on one moment. I'll respect your point of order in a moment, okay? So we are now going to debate the motion to postpone indefinitely. A post, a point of order has been made.
Mr. Chafee, Rudy Heller, 8 Central Street. Mr. Chafee said, if we have not spent it, then I'd like to postpone indefinitely. Have we spent last year's money or not? Please, the accountant.
The money from last year has been spent.
So that, that was, that was a kind of a cheat. That, I won't let you do that again, because that wasn't a point of order, that was just a question. So go ahead. Mr. Chafee?
My understanding that we have a lot of asphalt grinding piles in the town of Brookfield. There's one behind the Highway Department, and there's one down on Quaybuck Street, which is over, probably well over 1,000 yards of material. Why are we buying material? Why can't we use asphalt grindings on private roads?
Are you going to answer the question?
So, later this evening, we'll talk about the asphalt grindings. If it passes, we would like to use the asphalt grindings at the cemetery to replace some of the roads, to have it more in keeping instead of new asphalt. I've been working with Mr. Eaton on that, and he has some information, so we'll talk about that going forward. So I'd be cautious about allocating the asphalt grindings that we have towards the private roads.
That answer your question?
Does answer my question. Maybe we ought to talk to Lynch in East Brookfield there that's doing that project, that they're going to be grinding that road, and see if we can get some more asphalt grindings for nothing.
Is there any further debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely by, of, of, of transferring 3,000 bucks from free cash for gravel and, uh, gravel for the purpose of making various road repairs and private roads that town bylaw requirements? So is there any further debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely?
Tom Regan, through you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Chafee, given the conditionality of your motion to, to not consider this, I forget the exact term, do you still wish to continue that even though we have expended the money from last year?
The motion's been made and seconded, and we're debating it, he can't withdraw it.
I do not, I, I will finish. My question is, would he, if he, if he wishes to change his mind, would he like to state that publicly, or would he like to continue his support of his motion? Thank you.
I would like to change my mind, knowing that the money has been spent. I, I firmly believe that, so, so if we want to continue with this, I'm fine to take the vote on it, as is.
Richard, hang on one second. Hang on one second. I, I want to hear what you have to say, but this is what's going to happen here, right? If, if we want to withdraw this motion, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta take a vote of the town to withdraw it. I think we're better off just sort of making a vote on the postpone indefinitely, and if it fails, then we'll be back to square one, okay? You do what you want to do, but you're going to have to make a motion to withdraw your motion to postpone indefinitely. We'll need a second, and we'll have to vote, so.
I make a motion to withdraw the motion to move indefinitely.
There's a second. There's a motion to withdraw the motion to postpone indefinitely. There is a second. Can't remember if it's debatable or not, but I'm not going to debate it. All those in favor of withdrawing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to withdrawing the motion, say, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is withdrawn. We are back to the main motion, to transfer 3,000 bucks from free cash to purchase gravel for the purpose of making various repairs for private roads that meet town bylaw requirements. Is there any further debate on this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We're going to transfer 3,000 bucks of free cash to purchase some gravel. Article number 16.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer 25,000 from free cash to the library building repair and maintenance account for maintenance and repairs of both 2 Lincoln Street and 18 Common Street buildings, including pest control and remediation.
A motion has been made to transfer $25,000 from free cash to the library building repair and maintenance account for maintenance and repairs of both 2 Lincoln Street and 18 Common Street buildings, including pest control and remediation. Is there a second? I heard a second. Is there any debate on the motion to transfer 25,000 bucks to repair, to sort of maintenance and repair of the library buildings?
I want to ask the advisory committee through you about repairing a building without making it ADA compliant, because the library annex right now has no ramp, and so any public meetings we have there are not ADA compliant.
Can someone answer that question?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
So there is a effort afoot to apply for grant funding and to get an assessment done based on the historic nature of the building as to how much has to be done for it to be considered in compliance. I don't know the status of that, of that grant at this time, but we can follow up and get back to the townspeople through the website about what the status is of that grant application. So the intent is, there was a plan to use funding that was already available in order to address like three out of the four concerns relative to bringing that area into compliance. However, they held off on starting the work because of the grant opportunity, because they may be able to do a more thorough job by addressing it through that program. So we're going slow to go fast.
So are you saying, can I ask through you, Mr. Moderator? So you're saying that, um.
We're looking.
It's legal to start the work even if you may not get the grant, or you have to, you're, you're appropriating this money and waiting for the grant so you can do the repairs and make it ADA compliant?
So, so this money is not, is not aligned onto ADA compliance. This money is just to do general maintenance of the building, to keep it serviceable and to keep it in good order, okay? The, the grant application, the intent of that funding would be to go ahead and bring it in, either into compliance or identify what the appropriate plan is to bring it into compliance, and with that plan be eligible to, to potentially apply for even more funding so that it can be brought into compliance, leveraging funds from outside, you know, our free cash in the town meeting. So there is work apace trying to get the appropriate funding to bring it into compliance.
Alright. Any further debate on the motion?
Is the library director in the house tonight? I have questions for her.
I believe the library director is here, however, I did not recognize her earlier. Is there any objection to allowing, you're, you're not a citizen of Brookfield, are you? I think so. Any objection to allowing a, a non-citizen library director to speak before the town meeting? Hearing none? Ask your questions.
Okay. First of all, why are we putting lipstick on this pig of a house?
Uh, excuse me, please, please. No. That's not appropriate.
Well, that's my opinion.
It may be, but it's inappropriate language here.
No, there's nothing wrong with that.
Put it on your yellow sign.
No. I'm going to talk about it right here tonight, never mind the yellow sign. Why are we spending $20,000 painting this house when we could almost get it sided, get some good siding on it, put some nice shutters on it? We're going to paint it, and then three, four years, we're going to paint this, the house again. Why don't we take and put it into something permanent on this house? And we should, what are you going to do with that 40,000 we just saved? Maybe we should take some of that money and use it for the ADA on this building.
So the, the, the question is, why are we painting when we could use other siding materials, I think? Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I.
Come on up, Brenda, I'm not going to bite you.
So we have Brenda Mennerville, Library Director. We have looked into painting, and we are looking into siding. We're not sure which way we're going to go, but we are, it's completely separate from the ADA issues. We are going through the channels to do the planning and assessment that the town did in 2018. planning and assessment that the town did in 2018. We're going through the same process there.
Someone from the advisory board.
Brenda?
You're speaking to the questions, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Could you itemize when you presented as far as the 25,000, what were those line items that you were looking to spend out of the 25, not just the global amount, but what was the breakdown so that Mr. Holcroft will have a further idea of the 25,000?
Right.
Right, but you're mentioning painting is the whole thing. There's other things in that.
It's not the whole thing.
Right, but that's what I'm... But is... Was that... That wasn't the entire 25,000?
My question to you, Brenda, is why are we taking $20,000 and using it to paint the house when we can almost side the whole house for 20,000?
Okay.
And put new shutters up and make it look nice.
Yeah, that was the question. So, and if I heard the answer correctly, there really wasn't any certainty as to painting versus siding versus anything. Is that correct? That's correct. So, does that answer your question?
No, because it says right in here, 20,000 for painting. Now, you're asking the town for money, but you don't know if you're gonna do painting, siding. You don't know what you're doing, but you want money from the town.
It's a summary. So, town council is telling me it's a summary of an article. It's not a stipulation of how the money is going to be spent. So, what the library director is telling us is that it is uncertain as to whether it's gonna be painting or whether there's gonna be some siding or what's gonna be done with regard to that, but something is going to be done. Okay?
But don't you think the townspeople should know what is gonna be done and what the cost is gonna be?
They're about to make that decision. Thank you. You're done.
All right.
Is there anybody here from the historic council that can answer whether you can do siding in that historic region?
Is there?
I can answer that. There is not a restriction.
Okay. There's none. Okay. Any further debate on the motion to transfer 25,000 bucks from free cash to the library building repair and maintenance account for maintenance and repairs of both 2 Lincoln Street and 18 Common Street buildings, including pest control and remediation?
Don't look at me like that.
What's that? Do you want to speak to this?
I do want to speak to it.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to propose an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to propose that the motion be, I move that the town transfer 45,000 dollars from free cash to library building repair and maintenance account for maintenance, repairs, and upgrades of both 2 Lincoln Street and 18 Common Street buildings.
Hold on. All right. So, you want to strike 25,000 and insert 45,000 bucks and you want to expand what it can be used for, for maintenance, repairs, and upgrades. Is that correct?
That's correct.
There is a motion to amend, to strike 25,000 and insert 45,000 bucks. So, you want us to spend 45 rather than 25 and we want to expand to upgrades, including maintenance, repairs, and upgrades. I heard a second over here. Is there any further debate on the motion to amend? Yeah. Pat's making her way. She got up first, so...
You wanna know what it's for?
Okay, so now you're adding on another $20,000 at the top of a hat so that you can do some more modifications to a building that needs a whole lot more than $45,000, which is my opinion. My opinion is, is that let's not rush into a decision to add another $20,000 on to an article that we're not even getting a clear understanding of what they're doing to the building in the first place. So, Brenda has said that it's either gonna be vinyl sited or it's going to be painted, but she can't really give us an estimate. Now, is it just being vinyl sited and painted for 20,000 or are there other things on that agenda for the 20,000 besides that control of the 25,000? Because my addition is, is that it's 3,000 for bats, 20,000 for painting, and that leaves 2,000 up in the air that nobody's asking about. That's pretty simple math and I don't need, you know... So, now let's not add another $20,000 onto that without even knowing what we're doing. That's just throw some money at something because we got a lot of free cash. That's not the proper way to do it either. What we need to do is we need to come up with a strategy of how you're going to spend money to repair and get the annex up and running that's ADA compliant. And you've got enough people that volunteer in this town at the library. Instead of spending $20,000 paying for somebody to paint it, why don't we get a bunch of volunteers like the Amish do and do a barn lifting and paint it ourselves? I'll be willing to get on a ladder and paint. You know, I'll take a valium and get up there, but the point is, is that people need, you know, they haven't raised any money for themselves. Raise some money for yourself.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Taft. Mr. Holcroft was seeking the floor before and ladies first after all.
You know, I want to see the building fixed, but I don't want to see this turn into a money pit. Now, we're allocating 45,000. We don't, like Pat just said, we don't even know what we're gonna use. Why don't we just postpone this until we get a clear cut of what she's gonna do to this building? And then everybody can... I'm sure everybody will be behind it, but I think we need to get a clear cut of where this money is gonna be allocated. We just can't say willy-nilly and it's not free cash. It looks like we were raising and appropriating this. Is that true?
No, it's free cash.
Is it free cash? Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to postpone it.
There is a motion to postpone indefinitely. Hold on one second. Hold on. No, I need you to stay here, Dave. All right, so...
That's my choice of words, Bill.
Very good choice of words, Mr. Holcroft.
I think so.
It's a motion. I'm just trying to think about this for a second. You're looking to postpone indefinitely the amendment. Okay?
That's correct.
Because there's an amendment on the floor. So, you're just looking to postpone indefinitely the amendment that's on the floor, which is increasing the 25 to 45.
No. Am I making a motion amend... To amend to postpone spending the money on this house at this time?
No, no, no. The motion to postpone indefinitely is a subsidiary motion that's applied to the... I'm sorry. It's applied to the amendment.
Okay.
Okay? And what you're trying to do here is kill the amendment and then we'll get back to the main motion to spend 25,000 bucks as it was originally made. You understand what you're doing?
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. So, there's a motion to postpone indefinitely the amendment, which will kill the amendment and go back to the main motion without being amended. Okay? Is there a second to the motion to postpone indefinitely? There's a second. Is there any further debate? I'm gonna limit debate on the motion to amend only.
All right.
Did you want to go first?
I was gonna... I was gonna go first.
Go ahead.
All right. The reason for the amendment... The original reason for the amendment was actually I was taking Mr. Holcroft's advice here on the floor. He indicated he didn't understand why we're paying $20,000 and not addressing the ADA. The original quote that we had on at least doing a certain portion of the modifications was between 15 and 17,000. It wouldn't have gotten us fully ADA compliant, but it would have gotten us in the neighborhood for a building of that age. There are some allowances when you're dealing with a building of that age that can be considered historic even though there's not technically restrictions as Brenda said. So, the $20,000 would get us roughly in the neighborhood to get us most of the way to ADA compliant even if the grant money doesn't come in. So, that's the reason for the amount and I was actually taking Mr. Holcroft's comments into consideration when adding that to the baseline amount for the library.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, you're up.
The library is like one of the most beautiful buildings we have in our town. They're telling us that they need 25,000. It's gonna be now changed to a different number. I say we give them the money. I mean, the interior of the library is beautiful. The outside of it's beautiful. They need to get the annex up to, you know, ADA compliant. And Brenda can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the library receives grant money from the state every time they let people use that space as I understand it. So, I don't understand what the resistance is. They need the money. Let's give them the money that they need. It's one of the most beautiful buildings in our town. Come on, seriously. Please.
Okay. We got a motion to postpone indefinitely, an amendment to the main motion. Is there any further debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Hearing none. I want to make sure we're clear. A vote yes on this will kill the amendment and we will go back to... If it's adopted, we will go back to the main motion of 25,000 and whatever. Okay? If we vote no on this, we'll be back to the amendment, okay, which is going to raise 25,000 to 45,000 and expand the scope. Everybody with me here? All right. So, if you're in favor of postponing the amendment indefinitely, say aye. If you are opposed to postponing the motion to amend indefinitely, say no. I can't tell. I need to count. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I've done that before. I like, you know, I go, okay, so go ahead. Go do it, you know?
Could you clarify what we're voting on?
Yes.
Please.
I will. Okay. We have a main motion. We have a motion to amend the main motion. Okay? And now, we're being asked to whether or not we want to postpone the amendment indefinitely. Okay? A yes vote means we will kill the amendment and we will go back to the main motion of 25,000 and maintenance and repairs. A vote no, we will continue talking about the motion to amend to raise 25,000 to 45,000 and to expand the scope for maintenance, repairs, and upgrades. Okay? So, a yes vote, you want to kill this amendment. A no vote, you want to... You're in favor of the amendment. Okay? Is that clear? Everybody clear? All right. All those in favor of postponing the amendment indefinitely, please rise. All right. All those opposed, please rise. The yeses were 31. The noes were 38. The motion to postpone indefinitely has been defeated. We are back to the motion to amend the main motion to increase 25,000 to 45,000 and to increase the scope for maintenance, repairs, and upgrades. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Hold on. We've got a gentleman over here and I think you've spoken on the amendment already.
I want to speak on something else. Chris Roberts, 30 Pine Lane. I was just wondering if the... I'm not sure if it can be like a recommendation to the motion, but if we could earmark the 20,000 instead of just for upgrades for ADA compliant upgrades or something along those lines? Is that something we could do?
Town council tells me, I threw her under the bus, sorry, Michelle, that we could. However, it would tie hands. So, if bids came in for something, you know, one way and you see what I'm doing here, right? So, you could if you would like.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though. 20,000 is supposed to go for the ADA compliance items, correct? That was the original intention for adding the 20,000?
That's the intent, yes.
So, would I have to make a motion on the motion or how could I... How could I... What's the proper way to do that, to earmark that extra 20,000 for ADA upgrades?
So... How much do you want to do?
The 20,000 that was added in the motion to raise it from 25 to 45?
Yeah.
That extra 20,000 for ADA compliance upgrades?
No, it's okay.
I was just gonna add.
All right. Go ahead.
With 20,000 of this amount.
For ADA. Compliance. All right. No, no, I don't want to.
I think if we're still talking about the amendment to change it from 25 to 45, she could amend her motion to...
So, hang on one second. All right. So, what you want to do is you want to add to the end of this main motion with 20,000 for ADA compliance.
Yeah.
That's what you want to do.
Correct.
Is there any objection to just adding that? Is there any objection to adding that wordage to the end of the amendment that Selectman Kaufman has made? Any objection? Kaufman, sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Hearing none. Do you want to... Well, it's already been adopted, so you can speak some more. You still had some time left. You're all done. All right. Okay, Mr. Hol... So...
I have just a question.
Okay. Let me just make sure that everybody understands what the amendment is currently reading. This is getting confusing even for me. Okay, so the amendment is to increase 25,000 to 45,000, to expand the scope to include and upgrades, and that 20,000 of the 45,000 is for ADA compliance. Everybody with me? All right, Mr. Holcroft. Thank you.
I asked a question if this is coming out of free cash and it was... But in here, it says raise and appropriate. Am I reading this wrong?
The motion that was made was to transfer from free cash. That is the motion regardless of what you're reading there. The motion that we have on the floor is to transfer...
Okay, so what this says is not correct.
What says?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
I just want some clarification on it.
The motion... Okay, I'm sorry. The motion that has been made is to transfer 45,000 if we adopt the amendment from free cash. Forget about what's written in that booklet.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
There you go. You got it. You're good. All right. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Move the question.
Move the question. Is there a second to move the question? All those in favor of moving the question on the amendment, do you want to do it just on the amendment or all of it?
All of it.
All of it. Everybody understand? So, we're gonna shut down debate on the whole thing. If it's successful, we're gonna vote on the amendment and then we're gonna vote on the main motion. All right? If it's not successful, then we're gonna go back to debating the amendment. Okay? You with me? All right. So, all those in favor of closing debate on everything, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. We are gonna vote on the amendment, which is to strike 25,000, strike 25,000 and insert 45,000. Strike the word and and insert after repairs and upgrades as well as adding with 20,000 for ADA compliance. All those in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The amendment is adopted. We are now back to the main motion, which is to transfer 45,000 from free cash to the library building repair and maintenance account for maintenance, repairs, and upgrades of both 2 Lincoln Street and 18 Common Street buildings, including pest control and remediation with 20,000 for ADA compliance. and remediation with $20,000 for ADA compliance. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion as amended has been adopted. Article number 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $55,000 from free cash for the removal of hazardous trees in the town.
Motion has been made to transfer $55,000 from free cash for the removal of hazardous trees in town. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been seconded. Is there any debate on the motion to spend some money on taking down some dangerous trees? All those in favor of transferring $55,000 of free cash for removal of hazardous trees in town, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 18. Do I have a motion for article 18?
I move that the town transfer $80,000 from the Cable Peg Access Receipts Reserved Fund for the purpose of funding cable-related costs, expenses, fees, payroll, and general oversight of public access cable for fiscal year 2025.
A motion has been made to transfer $80,000 from the Cable Peg Access Receipts Reserved Fund for the purposes of funding cable-related costs, expenses, fees, payroll, and general oversight of public access cable for fiscal year 2025. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there any debate on the motion to spend 80,000 bucks for cable access?
Mr. Moderator.
Someone has the floor. Just waiting. Speaking of, speaking of the microphone, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I know you got a good booming voice, but you still need to, you still need to use the mic.
Could you tell me how much is in the, the cable access account now?
Sure. Our peg account currently has $193,867.
And where does that revenue come from?
It comes in from our payment from Charter every year.
When's the last time that we spent any money out of that account?
We, so it's a receipt reserved account, so the only way for us to spend money is when we allocate money at town meetings. It requires a town meeting vote. We allocated money last year for the same purpose, to put money into an article so money could be spent by the Cable Advisory Committee.
How much should we spend last year?
We allocated a total, my articles are combined, so over the last two years, we've allocated $130,000 and over this past year, we have spent $53,000.
So out of the 130,000, we spent 53?
53, yes.
Okay, so why are we asking for 80?
So we have to allocate money and put it into this article account in order for it to be spent. Per mass general law, if none of it is spent, it sits in the article account and it can either be carried over every fiscal year or it has to be returned to the peg fund. It can't go to free cash or anything else.
Okay, so it also says here that it is for payroll. Is this for an employee of the town?
Yes, we have a cable coordinator.
What do we pay that position?
I'm not sure what his wage is. No.
So we have an employee that we pay benefits to?
No, no benefits. It's a part-time as needed position. He videotapes meetings and does stuff around the cable studio as needed.
So part of that 53,000 is his salary?
Yes.
But you can't tell us how much?
So.
No, I didn't bring a detailed report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to transfer $80,000 from Cable Peg Access Receipts Reserve Fund for the purposes of funding cable-related costs, expenses, fees, payroll, general oversight of public access cable for fiscal year 2025, Mr. Holkcraft?
Can you read that any quicker?
I don't know.
What I like to know is, why is our cable access TV off and we're sitting with $193,000 in the bank? What's going on here? Three years ago, I was promised by Beth Kaufman that we were going to get this cable thing running and we still don't have the cable access on TV. Six, seven years later, why is all this money in the bank still? Yeah, no one can answer that, huh?
Any further, any further debate?
Ms. Moderator, Tom Regan, 6 Mockingbird Lane. Through you, I'd like to ask the Select Board if they could, if they are familiar with the status of the work by our cable coordinator and if they could share that with the town? And if not, I could? Or should I just share what I know, Ms. Moderator? Would that be simpler? Okay. In my position, in my position recently turfed out as a member of the Select Board, thank you, Mr. Jaffe.
Okay, please.
Is, I'm sorry. Is that the, the cable coordinator has been working to upgrade our equipment to the point, so that editing can be done faster? And he has, and when I last talked to him at the beginning of the month, he was slotted for training on the new equipment and new software and that was the last thing that we needed before the Brookfield Community TV channel on Charter could be reactivated. So my understanding is we are very close and I think that is a direct answer to the question that Mr. Holkcraft raised. We are, I don't think we're there yet. I will leave it to Select Board to push that ball over the hill and get it going. Or, you're welcome.
Any further debate on transferring 80,000 bucks?
I'd like to refute that, please.
Excuse me?
I've been hearing this for two, three years. We're getting new equipment. We're doing this, we're doing, almost ready, almost ready. I've been hearing that for three years despite what Tom just said. It's, it's three years you've been saying, oh, we're getting equipment, we're doing this, we're doing that. Nothing is getting done, zero. And we're still there now. And we have a guy that works for us and still isn't up and running. So let's stick to the facts.
Okay.
I can just say, we did just pay for new equipment. I can't tell you what, because I know nothing about what I was reading, but we did just purchase new equipments.
Okay.
My understanding is that there are plans afoot to electronically and videographically connect, is that a word? Yes. Connect the ballroom with the banquet hall through the use of some of these funds, which would be used to purchase equipment, which would help make it possible to hold meetings in the ballroom and transmit a two-way back and forth video and audio connection so that people who are not able to get to the second floor for those meetings can participate fully in those meetings. And from my understanding was that some of this money is going to be allocated toward that system. And if I'm not correct, I welcome any corrections.
Okay. Thank you. Any further debate on the motion to transfer 80,000 bucks from the Cable Peg Access Receipts Reserve Fund for the purchase, for the purpose of funding cable-related costs, expenses, fees, payroll, and general oversight of public access cable for fiscal year 2025? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 19, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $575 from free cash to fund plantings and care of plants on the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo.
Motion has been made to transfer 575 bucks from free cash to fund the plantings and care of plants on the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, is there any debate on the motion?
No debate, comment. Any way we can incorporate flags in this article? I mean, I notice there's no flags on the common this year. I do my part, put up some flags. I'd like to have some money available for the town to have all their flags in place. Could we, could we incorporate flags? I really don't know.
You could make a motion to amend to include flags.
Yeah, we have to add some money, definitely.
Then you'd have to move to amend the amount?
Understood.
And, and the language, how much you want to?
I know what I spend. I think we need $1,000. It's a start. Don't worry about that part. I just want to see flags throughout the town that aren't there now, but it would be nice in the future when the funding isn't available, that I gather.
Okay, so hold on. So what I want to know is how do you want to amend this thing?
Beth's going to do that for me.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $1,575 for free cash. Sorry. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town, that the town transfer 500, I'm sorry, $1,575 from free cash to fund the purchase of flags and plants for, for the care and appropriate maintenance of the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo.
Second.
Hold on. Okay, so you just kind of got me screwed up on the, on the language. I got the, I got the 15, 15, 575. So to fund or to pay for flags, plantings, and care of plants on the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. So there's a mo, what's that? I'm going to, Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo. So the motion is to increase 575 to 1,575 bucks and to include flags in what we're going to buy in, also plants and stuff. See, did I ask for a second? Second. Is there any debate on the motion to amend?
I'm behind this 100%. This is under the purview of the, of the Culture Council. I want to know, and I think Bruce wants to see flags on Central Street as well. I think that's what he's trying to say. But the Culture Council was supposed to take care of putting flags on Central Street. We've been doing that, what they've been doing. I was on the, so I don't know if we should go over.
I appreciate what you're saying.
Okay, I'm just making, no, no, I'm just making a statement.
We're talking about, we're talking about the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo. I'm sorry, that's what we got here.
What about the flags? Where are the flags going to be placed in town? You didn't state that.
The Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo.
Okay. Well, I don't know if Bruce was thinking of Central Street as well. I'm not sure.
Bruce is right behind you. Bruce, you want to tell them what you were thinking?
I'm right behind you, Bruce. I'm all for it.
Central Street, Common Street, River Street, wherever we used to have them, they're not all there this year.
Right.
And it was noticeable.
So, all right, this, the motion that's.
Flags for town property.
Yeah, but.
I know. It's pretty vague, but, but it is town property.
What are you going to do? What do you want to do? You want to expand it to like? You just want to say throughout the town? Throughout the town? Can we do that? And then just leave to the discretion of?
Discretion of the selectmen?
Plants. Okay. Man, you guys are really making me work.
That's what you're paid for, Bill.
No, you didn't. I haven't gotten a raise in years. Okay, so, so is there any, is there any objection to amending the amendment to basically strike on the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo and just say throughout the town? There's an objection to that?
I don't object. I would just like to make a clarification, if I could.
Okay.
I would like it to say American flags, please.
Anybody object to American flags? I hear no objections to American flags. All right. So, hang on one second. I just got to get my bearings on what we're doing here. All right, so we have a motion to amend that now is to strike 575 bucks and insert 1,575 bucks and to change the wording from free cash, excuse me, to pay for American flags, plantings, and care of plants throughout the town. All right? That's the, that's the motion to amend at this point. All right. You want to speak to the motion to amend?
Just a comment. My name is Noel. I live at Westwood Way over here in Brookfield. I'm a fairly new resident and so far, I love my new home. That being said, I, on the flag thing, she kind of touched base on what I was going to comment on. Are we just going to go with national flags and state flags? Are we going to just celebrate every faction under the sun?
She said American flags.
I understand that part, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about you. I'm talking of what, how you are going to define flags and if it's just going to be national flags and state flags or if it's going to be every faction imaginable.
Okay. So the answer to your question is it's just American flags only.
Okay, thank you.
Stars and stripes.
Okay, just making sure, wanted to clarify.
You're in.
I just got one question. I just got one, I just want to know where the money is going to be kept, what account, what committee, whatever.
Somebody got an answer to that question?
So this money would go into the warrant article account for flags and plants and it would get disseminated to whatever the appropriate groups that were going to get the flags and plants for the common areas of the town. They would appeal for what they were going to put out. They would then ask for reimbursement from this account. It could be Cultural Council. This was originally intended for the Garden Club because the Garden Club has funded this out of their own funds for a number of years and it's become cost prohibitive for the group that was supporting the town otherwise. So they're still providing the labor and now we would be providing the plants.
Mr. Moderator, Kevin Urkel, 130 Long Hill Road. To Ms. Kaufman's point that she just made, I believe that the purpose and the intent of this article is being hijacked. As she said, this triangle and the beds and the plantings around the gazebo have been funded by private donations and the intent of the article was to have the town pay for its own beautification. Now it, now it becomes something that's way beyond what we wanted. If, say that people want to beautify the town in other ways with American flags or whatever, they can, they're perfectly welcome to have their own article in a future meeting or to take over this themselves and voluntarily fund those projects. But I think that this project, this article should be limited in its scope to the original intent.
You oppose the amendment. Okay. Any other debate on the amendment? Okay.
David Fromm, 68 Fiskdale. Mr. Chairman, pursuant to our HCA agreement with the town in which we've pledged to be good citizens, Sun Fusions Incorporated would like to amend the article to state that if it passes, we will match the amount so that all the flags and the plants can be covered. Thank you.
There's no need to amend the motion. You're just making a commitment and a promise that you will make an additional contribution, which is wonderful, thank you very much, but there's no need for us to take an action on that. Only you can interact with the selectmen or whomever to do that. So thank you very much. We are back to, I believe, the amendment, which is to strike 575 bucks and insert 1,575 and change the wording so that the money is coming from free cash to pay for American flags, plantings, and care of plants throughout the town. Any further debate on the motion to amend? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The amendment is adopted. We are back to the main motion, which now reads to transfer $1,575 from free cash. to pay for American flags, planting, and, American flags, plantings, and care of plants throughout the town. Is there any further debate on the motion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Uh, Article twenty. The motion is adopted. Article twenty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer eight thousand dollars from free cash to demolish and clean up the town-owned former roller skating rink on Pine Lane.
Motion has been made to transfer eight thousand dollars from free cash to demolish and clean up the town-owned former roller skating rink on Pine Lane. Is there a second? There's a second. Uh, is there any debate, uh, on this motion?
Okay, once we demolish the building, then what's gonna happen with the land? Why don't we just sell the whole property and get rid of it? Put the money back in this, the general fund? What's the purpose? If we take it down, then what? What, we have something that's gonna be allocated for this piece of property? It's very small. Who, who can answer that?
Can somebody answer that question for him?
So, uh, the proposal is to re- remove the existing structure because it's a liability to the town. Be up to the town to figure out what to do with it afterwards.
Okay, that, uh, sole purpose to get rid of the building so that we remove the liability.
Charles Wilson, eight Ward Street. Um, I would just like to know why this piece of property didn't go up to auction with all the other properties last year, um, knowing that it is, you know, a detriment, if you will, like everything else we were trying to sell last year. And also, um, why should taxpayers pay for something we're just gonna sell? They're not making more waterfront property. It's gonna go for a very high dollar anyway, so why, why didn't we sell it? That's a good question. We're spending taxpayers' dollars for no particular reason.
Any further debate?
Um, I covered the original disposition of the property back when I was a reporter for the Spencer New Leader. The property was owned by a private person. He divided it up into condominiums. There were no buildings on the property, just trailers, but he subdivided each one into a condominium and sold them to the people owning the trailers that were on those condominiums. Um, the town ended up taking the owner to court and repossessing that property. The town now owns that property, including, I believe, the building that is the question of this warrant article. So, the town did not auction anything off. The town owns the property. There's since been Adena artifacts discovered on it, which makes it an historical site. And, um, so the question about auctions, I believe, is, uh, not applicable to this.
Any further debate, uh, on the motion to transfer eight thousand bucks of free cash to demolish and clean up the town-owned roller skating rink, uh, on Pine Lane?
Mr. Moderator, Tom Reagan through you. Um, I'm in support of this motion, uh, simply because while this will provide us time to decide how we want to dis- um, make use of this property, and the old roller rink, as I understand, is a liability hazard, and in order to protect the town from that and allow us time to decide what we want to do with that property, I think this is a good idea. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion? Alright, the motion is to transfer eight thousand bucks from free cash to demolish and clean up the town-owned roller, former roller skating rink, uh, on Pine Lane. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer five hundred dollars from free cash permanently to, to permanently mark the six oh one hot flood level high water mark at both Quay Bog Street and Quakum Quasit boat ramps.
Transfer, uh, the motion has been made to transfer five hundred dollars from free cash to permanently mark six oh one MSL flood level high water mark at both the Quay Bog and Quakum Quasit boat ramps. How'd it do? Pretty good. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any debate on the motion?
I just have a question. What's the, um, what's the five hundred dollars for? You need a can of paint, I'll donate it.
Can somebody please explain?
So, the five hundred dollars is to cover, uh, marking, signage, and labeling at both boat ramps. Uh, the Lake Association took upon themselves to pay for the survey that, uh, was originally in part of the article, uh, and has been removed. That thousand dollars has been removed. So, the five hundred is to cover the painting, signage, and marking of both ramps.
Okay. Any further debate?
Question, Mr. Moderator. I thought there is already a high water mark on the Quay Bog, um, ramp.
Is there, is there one there now?
Something was painted there now. I don't know what it is.
When we had it surveyed, we did put, uh, orange marks on the, uh, each boat ramp to identify the six oh one mark, which is in our bylaws. Um, but for anybody that is putting a boat in that's not familiar with it, they have no idea what two orange marks are. So, the idea would be to put a mark across the boat ramp saying, "High water, no wake", so that everybody knows, and a sign that, uh, enforces that.
So, you're saying it's already been surveyed, but we need five hundred dollars to put a strip and the words "No wake"?
Yes.
And signage, I believe you said.
Yes.
Any further debate? The motion is to transfer five hundred bucks from free cash to permanently mark six oh one MSL flood level high water mark on both the Quay Bog and Quakum Quasit boat ramps. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Uh, the motion is adopted. Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town reaffirm the vote of June first, two thousand twenty-three Annual Town Meeting under Article eighteen to make cemetery waterline repairs and upgrades along with any incidental costs.
Motion has been made to reaffirm the vote of June first, two thousand twenty-three Annual Town Meeting under Article eighteen to make cemetery waterline repairs and upgrades along with any incidental costs. Is there a second? Uh, is there any debate, uh, on the motion? Alright, uh, the motion is to reaffirm the vote of June first, two thousand twenty-three Annual Town Meeting under Article eighteen to make cemetery waterline repairs and upgrades along with any incidental costs. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Article number twenty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town adopt Mass General Law Section fifty-nine, or Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one A regarding additional compensation of assessors for courses of study.
Motion has been made to adopt Mass General Law Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one A regarding additional compensation of assessors for courses of study. Is there a second? Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town adopt Mass General Law Chapter fifty-nine, Section five fifty, as amended by Chapter six fifty-three, Section forty, and of the Acts of nineteen eighty-nine, Assessment of New Construction.
Motion has been made to adopt Mass General Law Chapter fifty-nine, Section five fifty, as amended by Chapter six fifty-three, Section forty, of the Acts of nineteen eighty-nine, Assessment of New Construction. Is there a second? Uh, is there any debate on the motion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept Mass General Law Chapter sixty-four and, uh, subsection three to impose an excise on the retail sales of marijuana for adult use at a rate of three percent to take effect on the first day of the calendar quarter following thirty days after acceptance by the town.
Motion has been made to accept Mass General Law Chapter sixty-four and Section three to impose an excise tax on retail sales of marijuana for adult use at a rate of three percent to take effect on the first day of the calendar quarter following thirty days after acceptance by the town. Is there a second? I heard a second. Is there any debate on the motion?
No debate, just some clarification to the townspeople what this all means. A lot of people aren't in the loop of what this is all about, so I think someone should explain it to them.
That's fine. Oh, is there an explanation? I thought he was gonna explain it to us.
Mr. Moderator, uh, under Mass General Law, uh, communities can set a local excise tax of up to three percent on any retail marijuana sold within the confines of the town. Think of it the same as, like, your meals tax that you're allowed to have. You're allowed to have, like, a hotel tax. You're allowed to have a pot tax. Uh, so, uh, every town that has adopted it has adopted it at the maximum rate of three percent, and that's the current recommendation before you.
Any further debate on the motion? The motion is to accept Mass General Law Chapter sixty-four and Section three to impose an excise tax on retail sales of marijuana for adult use at a rate of three percent to take effect on the first day of the calendar quarter following thirty days after acceptance by the town. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to adopt Mass General Law Chapter eighty-seven pertaining to governing public shade trees.
Most-
Did it? Did you hear me?
Did, did, did everybody hear him? Uh, well, I'm gonna repeat the motion anyway. The motion has been made to adopt Mass General Law Chapter eighty-seven pertaining to governing public shade sh- trees. Uh, is there a second? Uh, is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, uh, say aye? All those opposed say no? Article, uh, the motion is adopted. Um, Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town set the FY twenty twenty-five spending limits for the town's revolving funds authorized pursuant to Chapter five, Financial Affairs, Section eight of the town's general bylaws, as printed in Article twenty-seven of the Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Motion has been made to set the fiscal year twenty twenty-five spending limits for the town's revolving funds authorized pursuant to Chapter five, Financial Affairs, Section eight of the town's general bylaws, as printed in Article twenty-seven of the Annual Town Meeting warrant. Is there a second? Uh, is there any debate on the motion?
Not a debate. Um, I thought this regional highway equipment cooperative was defunct. Are we still doing this with other towns? And if we are, what are we doing? I mean, what are we doing with the other towns? I thought this thing was defunct five years ago. Anybody here can answer that? Highway boss?
I, I can provide some explanation. They, um, they do signs. Um, that's the biggest thing they're doing right now, is they make signs for, um, other departments in our town. They make signs for other towns. Um, so they receive a little bit of money, and they have a little bit of expenses to, like, Three M is their vendor. That's really all they're doing.
I've been told that that sign machine hasn't been used in years.
Nope, they're still-
They're still using it? Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any further debate on the motion? Alright, so the motion is, uh, to set the fiscal year twenty twenty-five spending limits for the town's revolving funds authorized pursuant to Chapter five, Financial Affairs, Section eight of the town's general bylaws, as printed in Article twenty-seven of the Annual Town Meeting warrant. Uh, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Article twenty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the select board to take the first steps to securing property to support a dedicated space for senior activities.
Motion has been made to authorize the select board to take first steps to securing property to support a dedicated space for senior citizens. Is there a second? Uh, is there any debate, uh, on the motion?
Just some clarification. Now, what do we, what are we allocating this money for? You're looking for land to build a senior center?
I don't believe there's any money associated with this.
Okay, what are we doing? Just having a search to look for some land to build one?
Select board?
So, this was a citizens petition. I don't know if we have the people that submitted it here.
Who's, who submitted it?
Yeah, it said sponsored by us, but this came in as a citizens petition. So, that's a, that's a-
Mr. Taff, do you have, do you have any answer to this, or are you just looking to debate?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, this was in discussion. I don't know if it was a citizens petition or a presentation, uh, that was made to the select board. Uh, that there is a need in this town for a senior center, and the Senior Council on Aging has been expanding their programs with the idea that in the future, we would certainly be looking for something more, um, uh, structure that we could utilize, um, other than the space at the church. So, this article would give the board the opportunity to can, take into consideration, uh, options for a senior center.
Any further debate? The motion is to authorize the select board to take first steps to securing property to support a dedicated space for senior activities. Um, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article twenty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town repurpose the remaining funds of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-five cents, originally voted under Article twenty-eight of June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen Annual Town Meeting, and under Article twenty-four, the third of June, two thousand and twenty-two Annual Town Meeting for the platform lift, now to be used for the purpose of creating handicap access to the second floor of the town hall.
A motion has been made to repurpose the remaining funds of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-five cents originally voted under Article twenty-eight of the June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen Annual Town Meeting, and under Article twenty-four of the June third, two thousand and twenty-two Annual Town Meeting for the platform lift, now to be used for the purpose of creating handicap access to the second floor of the town hall. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there any debate on the motion?
Yeah, if we're gonna vote an elevator in tonight, now you're talking about a platform lift too? Are we gonna need both of them? Or we're just gonna vote one of them, and we don't need both of them?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The intent is that this would be partial funding for the elevator. What we're doing is reallocating the platform lift funding to be used for any means found by the town to be able to get us to the second floor, which would include a partial funding of an elevator for the town hall.
Doesn't say that here in the article. That sounds a little shady to me. It sounds, it says, it says here, "A platform lift" with a figure. It doesn't say anything about an elevator.
Oh, 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 hold on a second. Uh, Mr. Hullcraft, can I just focus your attention on something here? Okay, 'cause when you started talking, I'm thinking the same way. Okay?
What's that?
But, but I'm not. Okay, it says, the tail end of that, of the, of the motion is now to be used. So, formerly, it was dedicated to the platform. Now to be used for purposes of creating handicap access to second floor town hall. I believe that is what it's saying. It used to be purposed for a lift. Now they want to use it for handicap access. Is that, I just want to make it clear.
Okay, that, that's, that's clarification. Okay. So, you're gonna, so, that al- money would be allocated towards an elevator, then?
I have no idea. It simply says this. Maybe the selectmen have-
I'm trying to figure out what it's actually saying here.
Does the selectman have an answer?
The intent is to repurpose the platform lift's funding for a future elevator.
Okay, alright, good.
Very good. Any further debate? Okay.
I, I do.
Oh.
All set?
Yeah, go, sorry.
So, my only concern is, as we start repurposing the funds, and then our next article is to install a fire system, and then we don't know how much we're gonna need for the elevator, and then we're gonna continue on and have to deal with a fire suppression system, I would like to know what the total cost is gonna be to use the second floor of the town hall. Because Sharon Mahoney spoke earlier that we have new equipment so that we don't need the handicap to access the second floor. We can meet the ADA accessibility by the camera system, having them on the first floor- by the camera system, having them on the first floor and the bulk of the meeting on a second. I hope I understood, stood you correctly, Sharon.
I believe you did not. What I said was, is that the video equipment that has been proposed would facilitate town meetings in the ballroom that could be accessed from the banquet room. There are other uses for the ballroom that will not be, be, uh, that equipment will not be sufficient for.
Does that answer your question? Is that clear, Richard?
Well, I want to expand on that.
Okay.
So as we continue to spend money to fix the upstairs, rather than do the bits and pieces that we're doing, like the forty-two thousand we used to paint the upstairs, and now we don't have the, really, the means to heat it any better than what we did when it deteriorated, I would like to know what the total cost is going to be to repair the town hall with an elevator, with a fire alarm system, with a fire suppression system, because it's my understanding, once we get over ninety-nine people on the second floor, we will need fire suppression. So that's probably a half a million dollars alone. Elevator's going to be anywhere from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. I would like to know what the total cost is before we keep allocating small bits and pieces to know that we have 1.5 million to go.
Does anybody have that number? I guess not. So I think the answer to your, the answer to your question is, we don't know. So I, and your time's expired, um, for the moment. So, uh, you got another shot at it. If nobody else wants to speak, then you can have another two minutes. Anybody else, uh, want to, uh, speak to the, speak to the motion?
Where is the seventy-two thousand dollars sitting right now?
It's in an article account currently designated for the platform lift.
Okay, so if we don't, if we don't pass this article, it still continues to sit there?
It'll stay there until I go to close this fiscal year, and then the selectmen will have to decide if they want to leave it sitting in the platform lift account, or if they want to close it out to free cash.
So since 2018, because this article number twenty-eight is from 2018, we have been storing it in this account right along, every year?
Yes.
Okay, and so now we're looking to move it to a different account?
Yes.
And what is that account that we're trying to move it to?
We want to move it to an account, um, that's just called handicap access for the second floor, because the original account is called platform lift, so it's restricted.
Okay. Ms., Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion that we permanently postpone this article.
There's a motion to indefinitely postpone the main motion.
Indefinitely postpone.
Very good. That's very good. Thank you. I heard a second over here. You, you, you have some more time if you'd like to support your motion to postpone indefinitely.
The reason that I say that is, is that I, I believe what Mr. Chaffey is saying. I think that between the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Board, and a few key people in this town should get together and find out exactly what we're talking about to repair our town hall instead of band-aiding money from this account, and band-aiding money from this account, and trying to figure out, okay, we have to do this, we have to do this, and by the time we get done, we've spent all this money and we probably still can't use the town hall. So let's figure out what the total cost is, and I would rather see us at least use the money to hire somebody to come in as a consultant to help us figure it out-
Okay.
-how we're going to-
Alright.
-upgrade our town hall.
Alright, so we got a motion, uh, to postpone indefinitely. This is, uh, totally unusual for us to have gotten to this point so many times this evening, but we are there. Uh, it is a debatable motion all the way down to the merits. Uh, Mr. Cook?
Yes, James Cook, Race Corner Road. I, I'm going to vote in favor of this motion, but I'm definitely, because I share Mr. Chaffey's concerns. Let me, we've been spending money on this town hall by bits and drabs. Maybe we need to have a little larger vision and consider putting up a new municipal building in this town that would be built for a hundred years, taking advantage of modern technology, so we use solar and other alternative forms of energy, so we do it energy efficiently, as opposed to throwing a lot of money at an old town hall. I think if we look at the total cost, a new municipal building versus upgrading at a town hall, anybody would look at ROI, would go in a new building.
We are on the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Understood, Mr. Moderator. Um, uh, I am in agreement with Mr. Chaffey's, and therefore I think the correct decision is to not permanently postpone this. I think that the underlying motion is valuable. By tran, if we do not transfer this money, it's going to fall into free cash and we will not see it until next year. By putting it into a handicap access account, we can access it starting on July 1st and use it to fund the effort to decide what we're going to do with this. Or we could even modify the underlying motion to make it a study account. But I think passing it over means we do not see that money until one year from now.
Postpone indefinitely. If I hear that word again, I'm going to-
Alright, so therefore I recommend we not postpone it indefinitely, and we vote on the underlying motion. Thank you.
Good.
I'm in agreement with Mr. Reagan. Um, I want to remind some people who may not have been here that over ten years ago, a plan was put forward with an architecture's drawer, an architect's drawings to renovate the entire town hall, the, uh, the, the intent being that if we paid for it all at once and did it immediately, it would be better than having to face dribs and drabs, as has, as we said, with the costs increasing each year. The good townspeople of this town voted that down, claiming it was too expensive, and here we are. So, um, I am in favor, I am, I'm not in favor of postponing this. I am in favor of the motion, the original motion, and I urge this body not to delay this any longer for the sake of some plan that may be voted down again in the future as being too expensive.
Young lady over here.
I just want Lori to clarify something for me. Um, Tom said that they had, didn't you, or Lori said that the selectmen had the option to keep it in the platform lift account, correct? So, but then Tom said it would have to go to free cash. So is it both? Which one is it?
So if it stays in the platform lift account, it can stay there indefinitely, or when I go to close the books at the end of the year, I give the selectmen a list of all open accounts, and they can choose to close them to free cash, or they can choose to let them stay open. And if they choose to let them stay open, the intent is that the purpose of the account has not been fulfilled.
Does that answer your question? Do you want to speak any further? Okay.
So I just want to summarize by saying, it's pretty clear that it's a minimum of 1.5 million to get to that, get that building to the point where we can be upstairs and using it. If we use that building twelve to fifteen times a year, are you guys willing to spend 1.5 million minimum, and then the cost to keep it going, the cost of the elevator annually, the fire suppression, the fire alarm system? I firmly believe that we could use this building going forward for the next forty, fifty years, rather than spending the money on the town hall. You guys decide, but my opinion is, we don't need to spend that money in that location. I would rather take the 1.5 million that's a minimum and build a senior center, or at least put it towards a senior center. And if we had that, maybe we could have our meetings there, or we'd have other usage. But the town hall is not adequate for this day and age. That's all.
Mr. Moderator, through you, I will point out that the, uh, the article at hand is seventy-five thousand dollars and transferring from one article to another, we are not voting on spending 1.5 million dollars on town hall. We're voting on whether we're going to set aside seventy-five thousand dollars that we've already set aside and now allocated for handicap access. Any money above and beyond that would have to be voted at a future town meeting. It's a seventy-five thousand dollar question, not a 1.5 million dollar question, and it's seventy-five thousand dollars for handicap access. And we can change that after we get past this question, so whether we're going to permanently pass it over, or we're going to permanently postpone it.
Alright, and to be clear, uh, the amount is, and I, I know you, you were just sort of trying to be general, but it's seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fif, forty-five cents. Just wanted to be clear. It's not seventy-five. Anyway, Mr. Cook?
Mr. Cook, um, I think you have to start somewhere. I think we got to start holding the line. Instead of spending 1.5 million dollars, again, we'd be better putting up a new building with a municipal center, you want a section area for the senior center. Start, I, I guess we just don't think about the financial ramifications in this town, and we need vision. Alright.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've been involved with a number of these, uh, town hall improvements and Capitol Improvement Committee and all these other things over thirty-seven years here, and to, to the point Sharon made earlier, you know, these, these, these committees work a long time. They work really hard to get things sorted out. They come to town meeting, sometimes they're successful, sometimes they're not. But the point is, this isn't, this isn't new money. The money's already there. It's, we keep it in the account to start the process, whatever that is, for the town hall. But understanding that if we're going to start the process, we've got to deliver. Either we renovate the town hall, or we build a, a new building. But this, that's not the debate we're having today. The debate we're having right now is what to do with that money. And the money's just there, it's been spent. Just move it to someplace where it could be used, or maybe it won't be used in another year, and then it'll go to free cash. But it, it's not like we're asking to spend seventy-two thousand dollars out of the blue. And we're not debating a new building or renovated building. It's a simple transfer of money that's already been spent. So I, I think we need, just need to move forward and get this transfer done and move to the next article.
Just to be clear, um, we are on the motion to postpone, uh, indefinitely. So-
I just have one question. We, the townspeople voted to put this, uh, stair, this stair platform lift in, what, four or five years ago? Why was that not done? The people voted to have it put in, and the money's still sitting in the account. Why was that not done?
Anybody have an answer to his question?
Hi, Mr. Moderator, Bill Simpson from, uh, I guess the Town Hall Improvement Committee, but thirty North Brookfield Road. Um, we've been working on this, um, for a long time, and, uh, we've made a ton of improvements to the town hall over the years. Um, we have two brand-new bathrooms that are ADA accessible. We have heating systems throughout the whole building that are fully functional. Um, and we've done it with pretty much grant money and, and a little bit of an allocation from the town. So we've made significant improvements to the functionality of the building. Um, you know, sometimes by our own hands, going up there and cleaning the great hall ourselves to get the painting job done. Um, I guess I personally have an attachment to the building and maintaining it and improving it as best we can, because it's been the town center of our town since nineteen, nineteen oh four. Um, and it's a beautiful hall, and having a meeting like this in that space would be a real treat, I think. This is stifling and rather uncomfortable. Um, but I would, and I've been pushing in that direction for a long time. So I would encourage you, the platform lift has been a nightmare. I'll just say that, you know, for the last six years, we've been trying to get the thing in there. Uh, COVID happened, the vendor went out of business, or stopped returning our calls, the cost went up, and there's been a lot of challenges with that. And Dave, I've talked to you some about this, and I'd gladly talk to anyone who has any more questions about this. I don't have a ton of time right now, but, um, I would encourage you to support, um, allocating this money. So voting against the motion to-
Postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely, um, so that we can just have some access to this money to at least have options other than the platform lift. If the, we could get the platform lift going, I'd be all for it, but that's been kind of dead in the water for a little while now. So, um, I encourage you to vote against the motion and support the, just transfer of the funds to, um, handicap accessibility. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further debate, uh, on the motion to postpone, uh, indefinitely? Uh, the main motion to transferring, uh, remaining funds, uh, to, you know, for handicap access to the second floor. Uh, any further debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely? If you vote yes, uh, this motion will be dead, and we're moving on, uh, to Article thirty. Uh, if you vote no, we will continue debating on this and eventually voting, uh, one way or the other on it. Am I clear? Alright, all those in favor of postponing indefinitely say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
Uh, the, the noes have it. Uh, the motion is failed. Uh, we are back to the main-
I, I want a count. I like a count.
He would like a count.
I would.
He would like a count. Uh, my counters, please. You guys ready? Alright, all those in favor of postponing indefinitely, please stand. Please sit down. All those opposed to postponing indefinitely, please stand.
You win overwhelmingly.
The noes have it, even on the twenty-four. Uh, there were eighteen yeses, and you said twenty-four, so that was forty-eight, uh, opposed. So we are back to, the motion to postpone indefinitely has failed. We are back to the main motion to repurpose the remaining funds of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-five cents originally voted under Article eight, twenty-eight of the June 28th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting and under Article twenty-four of the June 3rd, 2022 Annual Town Meeting for the platform lift now to be purposed for, the purpose of creating handicap access to the second floor to, of the town hall. Uh, is there any further debate, uh, on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number thirty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash to the sum of eighty thousand dollars to install a fire alarm system for the town hall.
Motion has been made to transfer from free cash the sum of eighty thousand dollars to install a fire alarm system for the town hall. Is there a second? I heard a second. Uh, is there any debate on the motion to transfer, uh, from free cash eighty thousand bucks to install a fire alarm system in the town hall?
Have we, have we looked, uh, looked into any other options? Uh, eighty thousand seems like a lot of money. Is there any way we can get the, um, Tantascule Wire Department to help us out here? If we bought all the materials? Is that legally, can we legally do that, to have the school come in and, uh, wire the whole place up? Would save us a tremendous amount of money.
Can anybody-
And it would give the kids a, uh, some good experience.
Can anybody address that?
Rich, did you want to speak to it since you've looked into it?
I'll speak to that. So it is an option. From what I understand, through the wiring, the shop teacher who has brought the kids out, it is an option. They may have to get a, an extension on their insurance to do the alarm system, and it's not guaranteed that they would get that from their insurance, the, the school's insurance. It's like a rider, I guess, is the word I'm looking for. And I'm in the process of communicating with the director, as well as the, uh, Mr. Wood is the director of the vocational department. So it's an option, but we don't know what it, whether it's a guarantee they could do it or not, and we're not even close to a, a number on the cost. Uh, Chris Gorman is here tonight. I spoke to him quite a bit about it. He has some insight. I would like to hear what he might have to say.
Chris Gorman, thirty-two Pine Lane. Um, so the, this article, I believe, is based off of, uh, some town improvement committee, uh, discussions back in 2022, I believe. Um, this article, it pretty much funds a full fire alarm system throughout the space. Um, the difference is with what Mr. Chaffey was saying, if we are required to install a sprinkler system, the actual fire alarm system that's proposed is, um, is overkill. It's, it's, it's much more than what's needed, um, with the sprinkler system, which if you went by the building code, we would be required to put in a full suppression system. Um, IBC nine oh three, um, dot two, dot one, dot three, states that any, um, assembly, uh, A3 space that has, um, an exit over the first floor, over a ground level, is required to have a full sprinkler system. Um, therefore, the fire alarm system that's being proposed would be overkill for what would technically be- overkill for what would technically be needed by the time we put in systems. In conjunction to have an elevator, you are required to have a fire alarm system. So it is multifaceted. It's very intricate. It's definitely, it's definitely more than just these two articles that are going to be provided for full ADA compliance.
Okay. Over here.
I have a question actually for Chris. Did they get a quote for the 80 grand, or was it, just to clarify, so it was just a discussion, so there is no quotes for the 80 grand?
So there, I provided an estimate
Yeah.
two years ago for that, and it was around that number. I believe they had an actual survey done before I was asked about this, and I think it was right around 80 grand as well, 72. Yeah, so 72 about five years ago. It's probably a little bit more than that right now. So that's a rough estimate.
Okay. Any further debate? All right. So the motion is to transfer from free cash the sum of $80,000 to install a fire alarm system for the town hall. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article 31.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the remaining funds of $16,260.33 voted on June 3, 2022 Annual Town Meeting under Article 19 for the 350th celebration to be reallocated to technology upgrades.
Motion has been made to transfer the remaining funds of $16,260.33 voted on June 3, 2022 Annual Town Meeting under Article 19 for the 350th celebration to be reallocated to technology upgrades. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there any debate on the motion?
Not a debate, but where's this money going? Technologies upgrade? For what? For who? What department? What building?
Somebody answer that?
Where's it going? We seem to be throwing money around here tonight pretty loosely.
Can anybody answer the question?
So the preponderance of that is going to be for a server upgrade. The balance of it is going to be available for replacement of some fairly obsolete computers. I don't have the list with me tonight.
Okay. Any further debate? The motion is to transfer remaining funds of $16,260 bucks, $260.33 voted on June 3, 2022 Annual Town Meeting under Article 19 for the 350th celebration to be reallocated to technology upgrades. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 32.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $10,904.65 from opioid settlement funds, special purposes stabilization fund for the purchase of Narcan and/or other opioid treatment expenses.
The motion is to appropriate $10,904.65 from the opioid settlement funds, special purpose stabilization fund for the purchase of Narcan and/or other opioid treatment expenses. Is there a second? There is a second. I just want to call everyone's attention that this will take a two-thirds vote. All right. Is there any debate on the motion?
I just have a comment. Can't we get Narcan from the DPH, or, you know, any of the state agencies for free?
Our fire and police departments have to pay for the Narcan we get.
So that would come out of, that would come out of their budget?
It's currently coming out of their budget until we started getting the opioid settlement funds last year. Now they're able to use this money to get it.
Okay, so right, as of this point, right now, there is money available for the Narcan?
Yep.
And just a comment, Narcan does not work on, what was that one there? The fentanyl, yeah. It doesn't work on that. But, I mean, we could really cut the cost down if we could get the, and if you go to New Hampshire, everybody is carrying around Narcan. And a Glock, but that's another issue. So.
Okay.
Little humor in the back, huh? It works for them, what can I say?
Anything further?
No, I mean, if we can get a free, maybe we'll save some money, you know?
All right.
And it's not only the DPH, but there are other agencies specializing in opioid treatment.
Okay. Thank you. Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. Could you take your seat? Thank you.
I just have a comment to make, Mr. Moderator, if I may,
Sure.
regarding this topic. My name is Nikki Chaffey, Fistale Road. As a nurse in the community, I just want to make sure everyone is aware that the cost of Narcan is going up. It is not readily available to all communities. It is not allowed for students to carry. And unfortunately, as we are aware, students are carrying and having exposure to this more and more. The other part that needs to be considered is there are many resources being used that these funds are being wasted on, not in the sense of wasted, meaning they're not appropriate, but effects that would not necessarily be. What I'm referring to is there are many calls that are made in the community for opioid overdoses that have a police officer or EMS respond to, then are allowed to reject being cared for. So we are having our services go. That's not saying people can't still call and use it, but this would give a locked box, if you have not seen these objects, in many areas, the ability. It's just giving us a safer way of still controlling it, as far as I am under the impression aware.
So if I could just suggest, if you have any ideas for, or anyone in the community has ideas for what we could spend, the money that we're receiving that has gone into this opioid settlement stabilization fund, which we are now moving just to an article, because you can't spend directly out of stabilization funds, you have to move it to an article. All of this money that we have received came directly from Johnson &amp; Johnson, from, I'm not going to remember all the drug companies' names, but it is the settlement funds that they had to pay out to the state of Massachusetts that was then divvied up to all of the towns. So it was free money to the towns to spend on any opioid-related expenses. So we can purchase Narcan, we can do any type of drug treatment, education, anything. So if you have any sort of ideas, feel free to reach out to the selectman, the fire chief, the police chief, because we do have quite a bit of money to use. And other than Narcan, we haven't done much with it. So, thank you.
Town council does say that it is limited on what we can spend it on, but nevertheless, is there any further debate on the motion to appropriate $10,904.65 from the opioid settlement funds, special purpose stabilization fund for the purpose of Narcan and/or other opioid treatment expenses? Any further debate? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The article, the motion is adopted. Article 33.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize select board to grant non-exclusive easement within the town-owned land as printed in Article 33 of the annual town warrant.
Okay. Before I go any further with that, I just want to state that that was a unanimous vote. Thank you. Sorry. Motion has been made to authorize the select board to grant a non-exclusive easement within town-owned land as printed in Article 33 of the annual town warrant. Is there a second? There is a second. I do want to tell everybody, if they're not aware, if it's not in the thing there, that this is going to require a two-thirds vote. Any debate?
Mr. Moderator, Bill Simpson, this is, the request for this came from, at my parents' property, 37 Upper River Street, we are looking to update the septic system, which was installed a long time ago. The problem is, I think, the way the town built the roads around the house, it now, the town's property and the septic system overlap. So to renovate the system, we can't even do a perk test in that area without having rights from the town to use this space for this purpose. So this is a request to the townspeople to allow us to redo or study and potentially redo our septic system at 37 Upper River Street, where the septic is. But we just can't do that because that's incorporated into the right-of-way that the town owns. It wouldn't be encroaching on the road at all. It would just be in the right-of-way that extends from the center of the road. So, and I can answer questions if people have some.
Anybody have any debate or questions or otherwise? All right. The motion is to authorize the select board to grant a non-exclusive easement within town-owned land as printed in Article 33 of the annual town warrant. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The vote is unanimous. It's adopted. Article number 34.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town authorize the select board to grant a non-exclusive easement with the town-owned land as printed in the Article 34 of the annual town warrant.
Motion has been made to authorize the select board to grant non-exclusive easement within town-owned land as printed in Article 34 of the annual town warrant. Is there a second? I heard a second. So the motion is on the floor. Is there any debate? But before we go there, this again requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any debate on the motion?
Not a debate, but, well, okay, I just answered one of my questions. I wanted to know who the owner of this property was. Second of all, I understand, I checked, it's state-owned land. It's not town-owned land, unless there's been some change. So I want to see where we stand on that.
Can anybody address the question of state versus town?
Greg Fagno, 147 Lake Road.
Hold on one second. I just, I just want to get to the question. Richard?
To Mr. Holcraft, I spoke to the town council. Whether it's town land or state land, we don't know at this time. However, if we give approval tonight, it could be used. If it's state land, the owner will have to get authorization from the state later.
Okay. We good? Good. Go ahead.
Okay, Greg Fagno. I have looked into this. My parents have been taking care of that piece of property since 1940. We've had our septic system there since 1984. I have looked into it. My lawyers have looked into it. We've dealt with the Worcester County Highway, who supposedly owned it. Worcester County Highway said they did not own it. It was a town-owned piece of property. I'm just looking to replace a septic system on that property. And I've just been waiting and waiting, and it's just getting dragged out and dragged out. And just, my lawyer is also here if we need to clarify anything else. She hasn't been recognized yet because she came in a little bit late. But if there's any other questions, hopefully she can help square things away.
Okay. Is there any further debate? First of all, before we go there, is there any objection to allowing the attorney to, where's the attorney? Hi. Okay. Any objection to allowing attorney to speak if so required? Hearing none. That's adopted. Okay, go ahead. Debate.
I'm Sherri Zitter from 149 Lake Road, so I am next to the property that we're talking about. And I just want to say that I've lived, I lived next to Gloria for a very long time before she passed last year. And this is the only, I mean, in order for Greg to sell this property, the septic has to pass Title V. So it would just be the place where it is, the existing septic is, just putting a new one in. So I hope that the citizens will support that.
Okay. Any further debate on the motion? Okay, the motion is to authorize the select board to grant non-exclusive easement within the town-owned land as printed in Article 34 of the annual town warrant. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The vote is unanimous. The motion is adopted. Article number 35.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $70,000 from free cash to the OPEB liability trust fund account.
Motion has been made to transfer $70,000 from free cash to the OPEB liability trust fund account. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there any debate on the motion to transfer $70,000 bucks from free cash to the OPEB liability trust fund account? OPEB. Oh, man.
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Yeah, what is it?
As other post-employment benefits. So we have a financial obligation under state law that we're supposed to be trying to catch up to our total obligations to all of our retirees and all of our current employees to cover the expenses other than their Worcester County retirement in advance. Frankly, in a community this size, we will probably never get to our actuarial number that we are supposed to carry for these purposes. However, we have started to make some motions to at least get a portion of that into place. And that's why it's different than what's in your book, is because where we freed up another $20,000 earlier in the meeting, rather than leaving that money there to flow over into next year's free cash, our recommendation would be to go ahead and fund that at a slightly higher amount so that we get a tiny bit closer to complying with that state law.
Is there any further debate? Do you want to, any further debate? I'll leave it at that. Okay, the motion is to transfer $70,000 from free cash to the OPEB liability trust fund account. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 36.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $60,000 from free cash for the purpose of funding of a new roof for the elementary school.
Motion has been made to transfer $60,000 from free cash for the purpose of funding a new roof for the elementary school. Is there a second? I heard a second. Is there any debate on the motion? Mr. Cook was up first there, Mr. Holcraft.
I have a question about this. When I was on the elementary school committee and we had to do some roof work, we took it out of school choice funds. How come this is not the case? Is someone on the elementary school board to answer that?
Yeah, if you're on the elementary school committee.
I am an elected official of the elementary school board committee.
Go for broke.
Nikki Chaffey, Fistale Road now. So it's not that we're not using funds from school choice or other reserves. We've actually been using all that. I'm not sure the last time that the school has asked for any additional money. But what is coming up is we had SRF funds that were established during COVID. Those have now, after three years, been withdrawn. And we need additional funds. We have done a lot of patchwork. We have done a lot of investigating. We've done our own thermal imagery that the school board has approved and been paying for independently, with the funds already allocated to us. We need to do more. In order for our students to be here, anyone who has kids that have been here, your kids have probably talked about how in the hallway, sometimes there are leaks that we have to put buckets under. It's unfit, there's mold issues, and now it's gotten to the point where it's past any additional funds unless we start taking away functions within the school. So if we were to use any money that is currently allocated with our elementary school fund, my understanding as being a part of that board member is we would then be risked to reduce any positions that are there. We would be asked to cut programs. It would directly affect the education and the care of these students, and wouldn't be doing right by them.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the total cost for the elementary school roof to be done over?
Anybody know? I'm sorry.
And are you doing the whole building or just part of it?
The end goal of the elementary school board committee is to have the entire roof fixed appropriately so that we're not doing these piecemeals every year. However, I do not have an exact quote in front of us. I do know that it was much more than what we're asking for. What we're asking for is what we know, that we will not be able to contribute without, again, removing either job roles or programs available.
Yeah, go ahead. What is it?
So the roof-
So, the roof replacement budget was estimated between 1.5 million and 1.8 million.
There you go.
Another quick question. Where's that money coming from? They have that much in school choice?
Uh, treasure, do we, do we, do you, do you know?
Just out of curiosity.
Do you know that? How much they have in school choice?
The balance in school choice right now is 712,796.
Does anybody know where the rest of that money's coming from? I'm not opposed to have them fixing the building. I'm not, just curious where this money's coming from.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes. So, I cannot speak to all of the money that we have that for. But we are doing our own independent. We have support from PTO. We have support from the community at whole. And we do have private factors that have been willing to donate as long as it's, again, to the improvement of the school and the students within it. We are doing everything within our power to ask as little from the community, even though this is a community elementary school that is only for this community.
Any further debate? Motion is to transfer $60,000 from free cash for the purpose of funding a new roof for the elementary school. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 37. Okay, who's making the motion? Come on, let's get on it.
I move that the town authorize the select board to petition the general court for special legislation as printed in Article 37 of the annual town meeting warrant.
The motion is to authorize the select board to petition the general court for special legislation as printed in Article 37 of the annual town meeting warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard a second. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing the select board to petition the general court for special, special legislation as printed in Article 37 of the annual town meeting warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 38.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the general bylaws, Chapter 12 miscellaneous bylaw section four as printed in Article 38 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion has been, has been made to amend the general laws, Chapter 12 miscellaneous bylaw, section four, as printed in Article 38 of the annual town meeting warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any, is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of amending the general bylaws, Chapter 12 miscellaneous bylaw, section four, as printed in Article 38 of the annual town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number 39.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town has State Representative Donald R. Berthium Jr. file legislation to have the Commonwealth establish and fund a passenger rail station in Mill Street in Brookfield.
Motion has been made to authorize State Representative Donald R. Berthium Jr. to file legislation to have the Commonwealth establish a fund, establish and fund a passenger rail station on Mill Street in Brookfield. Is there a second to the motion?
Next.
There is a second. Okay. Defend your motion.
Okay, Mr. Moderator. For those of you who are not aware, the federal government has given the state of Massachusetts money to expand rail service from the city of Worcester to the city of Springfield. It is proposed putting in a rail station in Palmer. From the point of view of the state's transportation network, it would make sense to put it in Brookfield to alleviate the road traffic on the Mass Pike. In addition to which, if you were to put a station or stop in Mill Street.
Mr. Cook, could you just, Mr. Cook, please, just back away from the microphone.
Back away from the mic?
Not, 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 not that, not that much. Just, you know, not, not, don't be all over it. Because it's, it's, it's distorted. It's distorting.
Do you want me to go from the top?
Oh, that's way too close. No, 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 no. Just keep going from where you started.
Okay.
I mean, from where you left off.
Okay. From the point of view of the state's transportation network, if you want to alleviate traffic on the Mass Pike, it would make a lot of sense to put a rail stop in Brookfield. In addition to which, if you look at Mill Street, it has one of the most important facets you need for a rail station. There's ample parking available there. From our point of view, putting a passenger station on, in this town would act as an economic catalyst for probably the spurs small business growth. If you look back 100 years ago, there was a larger commercial industrial sector in Brookfield when railroads were the dominant mode of transportation in the United States. I think we need to have some vision as to how we can provide an economic catalyst for this town. And I think a rail station would do that. Bear in mind, even though Representative Berthium would file this, such a station is likely several years away. If you look at the state's current financial picture, they're in trouble. But that said, at some point, the state has talked about expanding rail service from Boston to the city of Pittsfield. If we were to raise our hand now, the State Department of Transportation at some point will look, I'm probably putting a stop here in Brookfield.
All right, thank you. Any further debate?
Just so you know, if you actually approve this nightmare, multi-family zoning requirement for MBTA communities is as follows. Minimum, minimum gross density of 15 units per acre located in, located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal or station if applicable. No age restrictions are suitable for families with children. What this is going to make this, what's going to make happen is the state of Massachusetts is going to put Section 8 housing in our town. And I think that is absolutely absurd. Places like Holden and other towns are fighting this tooth and nail. We should not be putting this here. Let it go. Let them put their railway station and their Section 8 housing project somewhere else.
Any further debate?
Mr. Moderator through you. I would be curious to understand how Section 8 would be here. My understanding is that these are zoning rules for density. And I am not crazy about those. But I would, I would caution, Section 8 is how people are funded through their, for rental housing. This is the, the law here that a lot of towns are fighting is high-density zoning. And Holden is one town. Milton is another that I've read of. And I would say they, they already had their service when the law was passed for this zoning. If we ask for this when the law's already on the books, we're going to have no standing to push back. And it is going to change the character of our town. And therefore, we should, if that's what we want, that's what we want. But we should know that's what's going to happen if this train station comes in.
I agree with Mr. Regan's assessment of the difference between Section 8 housing and multi-family housing. That said, while I agree in principle with Mr. Cook's suggestion, I, my objection to this mainly is that I don't believe there will be ample parking in Brookfield for a train station. I don't even have any idea where Mr. Cook, and maybe he can answer this after I'm through, where he sees ample parking. The properties all around the railroad stations, the proposed railroad station in Mill Street are all private property. If we were to see a station to alleviate the traffic on Route 20 and the Pike, I would prefer to see it, and we have no power over this, but I would prefer to see it on the flats on East Brookfield, which is a large portion of it. It's already owned by the railroad. It's level with grade. There is ample space there for parking. I think putting it in Mill Street, while an admirable idea, practically would not work. And then the final thing is, it would be attracting traffic up 148 and to the Mill Street intersection where we've got like four roads all intersecting in that place. It would be a traffic nightmare. Thank you.
Okay. Hang on one second. Anybody else want to speak before we, okay, Mr. Cook, go for broke.
Yes, I'm aware that there's a current battle going on in the courts between the AG over high-density zoning for communities to have rail stop. We don't know how that's going to play out, for one. Second of all, this is a long-term, they may change the law. There's a lot of people really upset with that law, and it may be changed. This is at least 10 years away. But general comment, you know, the town of Brookfield, there are a lot of people here who want things in this town.
Back away from the microphone a little bit. There we go. You got it.
There are a lot of people in this town who want things. You need money to pay for it. I think everything now is settled on the homeowner. I heard Al Jones, our former town assessor, tell the selectmen just how little commercial industrial property we have in this town. My problem, having lived here 40 years, is we have a lack of vision. If you people want to live in a little town, then you better learn to live with that, all you're going to have is what a little town has.
Thank you.
Um, let me see. Where to begin? First off, I, I, I don't think that even if Section 8 were to come into our town, we, we couldn't, we couldn't prevent it if we wanted to. That's number one. Number two, the parking situation and the traffic situation, that can be handled by re-trafficking and redesigning the roads as part of the build-out for a train station. So, there are all kinds of things that would come into play. And things would not be the existing way that it is if you did that. He's proposing the Mill Street site. Doesn't necessarily mean that that would be the right site. Maybe the right site would be where the old rest area used to be. You never know. You don't, you know, there's, or you could handle it a different way. But to absolutely say, no, we don't want it in this town, it would bring homes into this town. Because let's face it, anybody that's going to be commuting to Boston on a train isn't going to be a Section 8 person, per se. They're going to be people who are professionals, who are going to move into town, who are going to have children, who are going to need services. And they're going to be commuting to Boston. And their income is going to be a whole lot higher than what our demographics are now. So, honestly, there is, it, there's not a, it's, it's not a bad solution. I mean, it's a little premature to go to, to Mr. Berthium at this point. But I think that it's, it is a potential idea. And it has been a potential idea for a while.
All right, time's up. Actually is. Any further debate on the question of whether or not to ask Representative Donald Berthium to file special legislation to have the Commonwealth establish a fund, establish and fund a passenger rail station on Mill Street in Brookfield? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
I, I need to count. I'm sorry. Are we good? All those in favor, please stand up. Ooh, I missed all that one, didn't I? All right, please sit down. All those opposed, please stand. The noes have it. The motion fails. Article number 40.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we raise the town moderator's salary to $100 per meeting.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. A motion has been made to raise the town moderator's salary to $100 per meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Okay. All right. A motion has been made to raise the town moderator's salary for $100 per meeting. I do want to just inform town meeting that this is only going to be an advisory motion because we've, my, the moderator's salary is coming out of the budget, which has already been voted on.
That's true.
Okay. And so, this is advisory to maybe the advisory committee or the selectmen or, or whatever.
This is in the year transfer.
Well, you, I, I don't want to, I just want town meeting to understand that you're not raising my salary off of this, such as it is. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this is just advisory. Okay, Mr. Cook, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I've lived in town for 40 years. The moderator has always been paid $50 per meeting. I think it's about time we gave him or her a raise.
Thank you. Any other debate? Okay. All those in favor of raising the town moderator's salary to 100 bucks a meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article 41.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we replace Chapter 10, Section 8 of the town laws with what's printed as following in the annual meeting warrant.
A motion has been made for the town to vote to replace Chapter 10, Section 8 of the town bylaws as printed in Article, is it 40 or 41, 41 of the town meeting warrant? Is there a second? There's a second. Okay, Mr. Cook.
Okay. We currently have Section 8, which specifies that the selectmen have to approve a parade if it's held on a public road in town of Brookfield. What this revised bylaw would do would expand that to any activity on a public roadway, bicycle race, et cetera. It would also establish some consequences, fines for individual or event organizers, and also would require a public meeting to be held before the selectmen authorize such an event. The reason why I bought this is, for the past couple of years on Rice Corner Road, there's been a bike race. Okay, I don't know who, who has approved it. But if you know Rice Corner Road, it's not particularly the most safest road to even navigate one or two bicyclists on as you drive along it. So, that was what prompted me to bring this. And when I looked at the bylaw, it's, goes back at least 100 years, and it really needs to be updated.
Okay. Is there any further debate on the motion? I've, I've got, yep.
Mr. Moderator, if we adopt this, then I'd like to amend it, that we change the word "selectmen" to "select board." It's mentioned multiple times.
So, is there any objection to striking "selectmen" and inserting "select board"? Anybody object to that, Mr. Cook? Okay, good. So, hold on one moment.
It's no yelling from the, Kenab Yeller.
Okay, hold on, hold on. So, there's no problem with that. However, Mr. Cook.
Yep.
The $500 that's in there, apparently the limit is 300 bucks. So, if it's adopted, it's likely to be kicked, kicked back by the AG's office. Are you okay with 300 bucks?
Yes, I am.
He's okay with 300 bucks. So, very well. So, go ahead.
I have a question. Again, Mr. Cook might be able to answer this. When he says public roads, does that include state roads? And if so, do we have jurisdiction to enact this type of a bylaw that affects state roads in Brookfield?
Town council's shaking their head no. So, I'm assuming that's no.
Thank you.
Ms. Moderator, through you, I have a question or two for Mr. Cook. Specifically, in the event that a, an event were held and the route went through Brookfield, and one cyclist at a time came through every five minutes, would that violate this law and subject to these penalties even though they did not obstruct traffic?
Well, the question might be better put to town council. But I would say that any event organized on a town public byway, again, the original bylaw says parade on a town public way. So, I assume it excludes a state road. public way, so I assume it excludes a state road. Um, it, again, what the intent here is to upgrade the law. If someone wants to hold a bike race or motorbike race, any event that's going to take, use the town public roads, they need the selectmen's permission.
Uh, with the remainder of my time, I'd like to address this question to Chief Blanchard. Uh, Chief Blanchard, in your opinion, is this law necessary or do we have sufficient rules to deal with events that overly obstruct a public right-of-way in town? Uh, whether it's a bike race or a, a parade or any other type of event?
So, what exactly is your question?
Uh, Chief, the, the question was, um, in, in your opinion, as the chief of police, do the exist, um, do the existing rules and bylaws of the town provide you with sufficient tools in order to maintain the, um, freedom of use of the right-of-way and to deal with, um, people who are hogging the road and clogging it up, whether it's through a bike race, an unauthorized parade, or a road race? Or, in your opinion, is this necessary or useful?
You've got 35 seconds.
Oh, jeez. I think we have adequate rules and regulations for the road. Uh, the only thing I can think of right now, there's only a couple races that come into town. I don't know where this bike race comes from. I know there's a road race that comes up from Tantas where it goes up to Mr. Cook's house. There's also one that goes from the high school around that section. But there is some sort of bike race that every year, when I come into work, I see little colored arrows telling people where to go. I, I've never seen the race and nobody's ever complained about the race. Like, I don't even know anything about the race. It doesn't seem to be a problem. Is that the bike race you're talking about?
Yeah, it's a problem.
I, I've never got a complaint about it. I just noticed the markers on the road.
Okay.
Telling where to turn.
All right.
And I think it encompasses more than our town. Is that correct?
Right, but we can't...
So, I, I, I think Chief is, is basically saying that, um, current, current bylaw, I, I'm not, I'm just saying what he said, current bylaw is sufficient. Okay. Uh, is there any further debate, uh, on the question? Okay. Hearing none. Um, the motion is to vote to replace Chapter 10, Section 8 of the town bylaws as printed in Article 41 of the annual Town Meeting Warrant. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, we changed it to, I'm sorry. We, it has been, I'm going to do that again. Um, we did change 500 to 300 and, uh, it's now "select board" rather than "select man." Okay, I'm sorry, I got to do this again. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
Uh, the noes have it. Uh, the motion fails. Uh, Article 42.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we add the following section to Chapter 2 of the town bylaws. Electronic voting buttons will be used at all town meetings to tally and record all votes during the proceedings.
A motion has been made, uh, to amend, um, uh, the town bylaws to, uh, to add the following section to Chapter 2 of the town bylaws, uh, that electronic voting buttons will be used at all town meetings to tally and record all votes, uh, during the proceedings. Is there a second? I heard a second. Thank you. That second. Uh, I just need to sort of point out to Town Meeting, uh, that if this is adopted, there is a conflict currently with this, uh, in Section 13, uh, and it may come back to us, but I just want everybody to be aware, uh, of that. Uh, so, Mr. Cook?
Well, therefore, I'll, I'll amend my motion. You basically want to rescind Chapter, Section 13 of the town bylaws and replace it with the new section.
Okay. So, uh...
If you accept the friendly motion, I'll give it to you.
So, hang on one second. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Cook is now looking to amend, uh, to, um, uh, to, to add at the beginning to strike, uh, current, uh, Section 13 and replace it with a new Section 13, uh, that states electronic voting buttons will be used at all town meetings to tally and record all votes during the proceedings. Is there a second to the motion? There's a second to the motion? Okay. We are now debating an amendment, uh, to the main motion, uh, to sort of strike Section 13, uh, and, uh, insert this new language into it. Okay? All right. Um, Mr. Cook, it's your motion to amend, so I'm going to let you have at it.
Yeah, well, I, again, I was just alerted to this possible conflict, like, this morning. Um, so it's my fault I forgot to state it. I should have stated "rescind."
Did you have, uh, did you want to say something?
I just have a question. Did we, I guess it's for the selecting, did we get the voting buttons already as an approved grant?
Yes, they are.
Correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Ms. Moderator, question, uh, for the amendment is specifically, what is Section 13 that we're striking? I'm not familiar with it and it's not in the text, so could you please help us?
Thank you so much for that question. I was so ready for this. I just love you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No. Section 13 currently says, "When a question is put," that is, when I ask you to vote, "the sense of the meeting shall be determined by the voices of the voters and the moderator shall declare the vote as it appears to him. If the moderator is unable to decide the vote," sorry, hang on, "is unable to decide the vote by the sound of the voices, or if his decision is immediately questioned, he shall determine the vote by ordering a standing vote and he may appoint tellers to make and return the count." So, there is the current, uh, Section 13. Anything else? All right. So, uh, we still have the motion to amend, uh, which is basically just going to strike this language and insert the new language. Uh, any further debate on this? All right.
Excuse me, did I hear that we have the voting buttons already?
Yes.
We have the equipment?
We do.
And it costs us nothing?
It was a grant.
Okay. Thank you.
As I understand it. Yeah.
We've already bought this technology. All this bylaw does is codify it. It replaces what was the formal practice of having the town moderator, uh, tally the
All right. So, uh, the motion is to amend the main motion to strike, uh, the current language of Section 13, uh, and add, uh, the following language. Electronic voting buttons will be used at all town meetings to tally and record all votes during the proceedings. Uh, did you want to debate? Yes. Okay. Go.
If we strike that completely, what do we do if the system goes down?
Uh, I, I really, the, the meeting would have to be postponed or, or adjourned to a, a different time until the, the buttons are, there's no failsafe in this. As I understand it.
Can I s...
Okay. This is the second time on the amendment, so you have more time on the other one because you, okay? But I just want to...
Well, uh, here's the issue. You've already bought this technology. When you bought it, you should have a amendment in the town bylaws specifying its use, and that's why I put this forward.
Any further debate? Yes. I see. We have further debate.
Chris Roberts, 30 Pine Lane. Um, just to address the failsafe, could, kind of maybe a friendly amendment, um, could we maybe keep the language that's already in Chapter 13? I don't know exactly, that might be for council, how to exactly word it, but keep the language in 13 as a failsafe, like if the electronic system is not working the day of voting or something along those lines, we have a backup plan? Because it seems like there are some people that had some...
Yeah, I didn't bring the language with me.
Oh.
Uh, you could add some language to this.
Yeah.
Uh, that would...
I just don't know what the appropriate language would be.
Basically say, uh, what would it say? Richard, um, excuse me.
We could take it right from Article 13 and just put it back in place if the equipment fails.
Instead of striking it, put this in, in front of it.
Candidates, I'm just checking what...
Why would you even bother, why would you even bother taking out votes? Votes of voters? Because then you just, just add... Or actually, the reverse. Actually, it needs to be the reverse.
All right. Um, so, what you would want to do is you would want to add, after, uh, the electronic voting buttons will be used at all town meetings to tally, uh, and record all votes during the proceedings, period. You want to add, "If the voting buttons fail, the moderator may, uh, take the sense, determine the sense, uh, of, uh, the meeting by, uh, the voices of, and then the rest of, section, current Section 13."
Yes.
Do you understand what I'm doing here?
Yeah.
So, we will have to use the voting machines, but if for some reason, technology fails, and it never does, right? Uh, we would then fall back to the current Section 13. Are we good?
Yes, good.
Does anybody object to that? Anybody object to that? All right. So, uh, we've got, uh, we've got a, a motion to amend, uh, that basically, uh, is, um, to amend, uh, Chapter 2, uh, Section 13 by striking Section 13, the current language to Section 13, um, or, yes, uh, and inserting, "Electronic voting buttons will be used at all town meetings to tally and record all votes during the proceedings," period. "If the voting machine, if the voting buttons fail, the moderator may determine the sense of the meeting by the voices of the voters and the moderator shall declare the vote as it appears to him," period. "If the moderator is unable to decide the vote by the sound of the voices, or if his decision is immediately questioned, he shall determine the vote by ordering a standing vote and he may appoint tellers to make and return the count." That's the motion to amend the main motion, right?
Yes.
All right. So, uh, is there any, uh, you, we're already, we're already past that stage. Thank you anyway. Uh, uh, so is there any further debate, uh, on this, on this wonderful motion that Mr. Cook has crafted? One, uh, are you, do you really want to debate this? No, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to deter you or anything, but sit back down for heaven's sake.
Yeah, right.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. Come on, what were you going to say? No, 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 no.
I mean, somebody has to set this up and all that. I mean, you're just, we really have all of this together?
Yes, we do. Yeah. And it's, it's actually, it's actually very nice technology. I mean, it really is. And, and it's, so, uh, you know, I, I'm not, I'm just saying, we have the technology, it is there, and it's not, it's not really that difficult.
Do we have enough for everybody in the town that can vote?
How many, how many, how many other things do we have? 300. We have 300.
Okay.
If we ever want to build a new school someplace, I don't think 300 is going to be enough, but hey, just saying. Okay. Um, I'm sorry. Okay. So, is there any further debate, uh, on this motion to amend? Okay? Basically, the emotion is to amend, uh, town bylaw, Chapter 2, Section 13, by striking it and inserting, "Electronic voting buttons will be used at all town meetings to tally or record all, uh, votes accordi, during the proceedings," period, uh, and then most of the language in current Section 13. Uh, all those in favor, uh, of this amendment, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Oh, that's wonderful. The motion to amend has been adopted. Now, we're back to the main motion, which is basically the motion to amend. All those in favor of the main motion as amended, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Uh, the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Mr. Cook, thank you very much. We're done. Article 43. Are we good?
Got to bear with me on this one. I get thrown under the bus on this one. Article 43. See if the town will vote to amend the personnel bylaw by adding, Chapter 15, Section 27, "Longevity Pay," and add the following language. Longevity stipends will be paid at the end of a fiscal year to all regular, full and part-time employees for continuous years of service. Town personnel policies and procedures may provide further definition of the calculation of continuous service and the schedule for payment of longevity pay. Five to seven years, $600. Eight to 11 years, $750. 12 years to 14 years, $1,000. 20 years and beyond, $1,500. Laurie, do you have a total?
I don't think you need a total.
No, no. I'm working on it. I'm working on it. No.
Yeah, hang on. Whoa, whoa, what do we, what, so, all right, that's the motion, right?
That's the motion.
Okay. So, a motion has been made, okay, uh, to amend the personnel bylaw, Chapter 15, to add Section 27, is that correct?
Yes.
To add Section 27 as printed, I have it written, as printed in the annual Town Meeting Warrant. You've already read all of that material. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, there's a second. Now you may debate.
The reason for this is, I believe, to, well, I believe the police in the library have this longevity pay already. I'm just trying to introduce it for the rest of the town employees.
Okay. Any, you want to say anything more? Okay?
I, I think longevity pay is where we have to be today. Because people don't stick around too long anymore.
All right. Any further debate on the motion? Uh, oh, I got, I got a couple of people here. Uh, so, I, I got, I got down here, uh...
I am.
Okay. Hello, folks? I got, I got, Town Treasurer.
So, we paid out longevity pay this fiscal year because we were bound to it by the article that was voted last year. The longevity pay that we voted cost us $36,800, which was actually more than we allocated last year, and we had to approach the Advisory Committee for a reserve fund transfer. Longevity pay is typically done in communities where there is constant turnover, and longevity pay is done to keep employees. We don't have a turnover here, um, so the, the amount voted would be approximately $40,000 you would need every year because the chart would keep increasing every year. So, just some basic information.
Okay. You're up.
Okay. For a person being in her job for 37 years, I know all about longevity, but I'm not a municipal employee. I'm a private sector employee. As a private sector employee, I get bonuses, I get raises. As a municipality, you make that choice to work for the municipality, which means you make a choice not to get a bonus. This is a bonus. I don't care how you, how, how you spin it, it is a bonus. It is extra money that you're getting because you've been at your job as long as you have. The Advisory Board over here did not recommend this. This is on... This is on top of the raises that we give, we give substantial raises, 4% is higher than a, than the, the core raise, or the cost of living raise. So, we're already giving out higher raises, so why would we give out an additional amount of money for longevity when really, we have a lot of employees in our town that are probably in the 20-plus range? So, the only thing that this does is it puts, it gives the, it makes the taxpayers pay our employees more money than what they're already receiving as a paycheck, because we have turnover? When is the last time that we really had any major turnover in this town? And one employee here, one employee there, but not many?
Uh, hold on one second. Please, someone speaking at the microphone, if we could please keep the voices down, I'd appreciate it. Okay, continue.
Can you say?
No, 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 no. Uh, please, address me, thank you.
They have more than an ample opportunity to get up and say something.
Yeah, oh.
So.
Finish up.
What I'm saying is, is that I don't believe that we should vote. Last year, the intent was to give a longevity payment to people because of things that happened with COVID and working and so on and so forth, and it was supposed to be some kind of incentive for these people. But to give it to them on a yearly basis? That is not what the intent for this longevity was for. This longevity fee was only supposed to be for one year. Now, you're looking at expending $40,000 a year, every year, for as, for as long as or more as the time goes on.
Okay. Thank you.
Am I next?
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Where's all this money coming from? You got a special account for this one, too?
The money from last year that we voted went into an article, the 31,100, we asked for a reserve fund transfer, and that money came from the reserve fund to fund the remaining money that I needed to make this year's payments. There is currently no money associated with this article.
You took money out of the reserve for, for, for wages?
Reserve fund, yes.
I didn't think you could do that.
You can.
Oh, okay, because I was on the advisory board for 15 years, and we never did that, ever.
Nope, you can transfer from the reserve fund for any, any purpose.
All right, so that's where this, so every year, this, every year, this will increase in value?
It would if we voted it in as a bylaw and chose to fund it.
So, it's just going to continuously go up?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm opposed to this. We have a spending problem in this town. I've sat through an entire meeting where we've used free cash to pay for things to get around the levy limit. Free cash comes from overtaxation of the people. You people have a problem with controlling your budgets in this town. This is just going to be another budget buster if we were to vote this in. And you just turned down, the only proposal I have in mind, do anything inspiring economic development, expand the tax base in town. We had a bigger tax base in town 100 years ago than we do now. And you keep wanting and wanting things, and so all it's doing is placing a burden on the taxpayer. Get it together.
Mr. Moderator, through you, I believe this question should go to the accountant. Is there a effective floor to the, or limit to the number of hours that someone would need to qualify for this? For example, if someone averaged five hours a week and they had eight years of service, would they qualify for the same bonus as someone who worked full-time for those same eight years?
So, they have to be full-time or part-time benefit eligible, so they have to work at least 20 hours a week.
Oh, it's benefit eligible?
Yes.
I missed that part, thank you.
Is that it? Hold on.
Well, so actually, like Beth just said, it is not in the language of this, this article. When we voted it last year to pay out for this one-time payment, it was part-time benefit eligible or full-time employees.
Okay. So, the article as written means that someone who is working five, an average of five hours a week and has been with us some, however many years, would receive the same longevity bonus as a full-time employee?
It just says regular, full-time, and part-time employees, so yes. And this article also is missing the people who have worked 15 to 19 years of service. So, there's flaws in this article.
All right. Ms. Moderator, I move that we amend the article such that, to the effect that part-time employees have their bonus prorated based on the proportion of their hours compared to a full-time employee.
I'm going to need that writing.
I, I will yield to Ms. Cofflin if she has the same idea as me.
Um, do you have it written? Hang on one second. He wasn't done, and he's offering an amendment, and I'm going to give him an opportunity to do so. All right. So, would you give it to him so that you can read it and see if, see if it works?
I can't read this.
Have her, have Beth, have Beth read it. Please, have Beth read it, please. Just...
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, this is, this is my proposed amendment. I think it's largely in line with what Mr. Regan was saying. So, following the word, uh, payment, pay, payment of longevity pay, insert the words, for employees averaging 20 hours or more per week. The, the text remains the same, down to 12 to 14.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Could you use backup? So, I was having a hard time finding, payment of longevity pay. So, continue.
Okay.
Or start over.
Okay. At that point, insert the words, for employees averaging 20 hours or more per week.
For employees averaging, how many?
20 hours.
20 hours a week.
Right, or more per week.
Yeah.
The table is the same, except, uh, strike the four in 14 and replace it with nine for 19. And then add, okay?
So, you want to, oof, so you want to strike the 14 in the years 12 to 14?
Right.
And what do you want to put in there?
Replace that with 19.
19?
Yep.
And what's the next one?
And then following the end of that table, insert the text, for employees averaging 19 hours or less per week. And insert a table that reflects the table above, but at 50%, so.
Hold on.
Yep.
Averaging 19 hours a week or less than?
19 hours or less per week.
19 hours per week or less.
Yep. And then a table that reflects the same text to the left as the first table, but the, the right-hand side would be $300.
Hang on.
Yep.
Okay. What are the numbers?
300, 375, 500, and 750.
So, the motion to amend is going to add the words, after, for payment of longevity pay, comma, for employees averaging 20 hours per week. You'll have the table that's there with striking 14 and putting 19. And after that, you're going to add further language that says, employees averaging 19 hours per week or less will get longevity pay, and I'm just putting these in there, according to the following table, which would have had years five through seven, at 300 bucks, years eight through 11, 375 bucks, years 12 through 19, $500, and years 20 and beyond, 750. Is that your motion to amend?
That is my motion to amend.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To, well, to add the language, after, uh, payment of longevity pay, for employees averaging 20 hours per week, with the table, except for 14, 19 years instead of 14 in the third row, and then after the $1,500, you would continue with employees averaging 19, 19 hours a week or less, with basically the same years, 300, 375, 500, and 750 bucks. All right. So, it's been made in second, amendment has been made and seconded. Is there any debate on the amendment? You want to debate, debate the amendment? Oh, you can, I, I, that's where we're at. It's not going to go into the depth of the question, it's just this.
Yeah.
All right.
Just a quick question. If, if somebody is, thank you. If somebody is working five hours or 10 hours, and then they go to 20 hours, is there a mechanics for, all of a sudden, you've been there for 20 years, you get the, the higher rate or the lower rate? I mean, it's a...
Who can answer the question for us?
If I may. Um, Mr. Eaton, the, I believe the calculation would be based on the number of hours worked in that year and the number of years of service. And so, if someone worked for 20 years at 10 hours per week, they would, up until that point, they would get the part-time bonus, and then when they went, and then after 20 years, when they went to 23 hours a week, they would then qualify for the full-time bonus, even though that was their first year at full-time. That is my understanding, the intent of the amendment, and I think that is consistent with the wording.
Did that answer your question? Yes. All right. Mr. Chafee?
I just want to say that the amendment now brings it from 40,000 to significantly more. I don't know that we can afford it.
We're only speaking on the amendment.
We're only speaking on the amendment. Sit.
Mr. Chafee, could you elaborate on that? How the, how that raises the, the total cost?
Through you, Ms. Moderator.
So, the calculation that I did for this year was only for full-time, part-time benefited employees. So, when we now pay employees that are 19 or less hours a week, that includes everybody else in the town hall that did not receive a stipend this year.
They did get it this year. So, if you remember, it was amended on the floor, so.
Yes, you, you asked the question, so.
Um, Mr. Chafee, I'd like to point out that the higher cost is inherent in...
Okay, so, no, okay, you're, you're addressing me, not Mr. Chafee.
Mr. Moderator, may I respond to this, Chafee, through you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would say that the higher cost is inherent in the original article that was in there, and the amendment reduces, it, it's still higher than last year's, but it reduces what we would have paid if we don't do the amendment, is my observation. The amendment lowers the cost. It's still higher than last year, but it lowers it below what it, it's less than what it would have been otherwise.
All right.
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Uh, yeah.
The calculation may have been against the, the staff that's currently full-time benefited or part-time benefited, but the verbiage indicated all employees. So, I, I just want to be clear that, that it didn't, the language doesn't raise the calculation, what it does is leaves it less open to interpretation.
Okay. Uh, any further debate on the amendment?
I, I had a question. My name's John Washburn, 12 Maple Street.
Yes, sir.
Is this going to be a payout every single year? So, basically, this is going to go up every year, basically?
Well, it wouldn't go up, it would be the same.
It'd be, it'd be the same, unless somebody goes from a certain stage to the next stage, they would get the top, another amount. Um, this is, this is going to raise our...
Could you, could you speak into the, speak into the mic?
It's going to raise our budget and everything else so higher, just, just for bonuses, you know? And that's every year, it's not just one-time thing, it's going to be every year. So, it's going to, our capital's going to go, it's going to take our funds away quicker every year, longer.
Any further debate on the, I'm sorry. Any further debate on the amendment? All right. The amendment is to add to the original motion, the words, after payment of longevity pay, for employees averaging 20 hours a week, they'll get longevity pay according to the table that's there, except 14 years is 19, and then followed by the language, employees averaging 19 hours a week or less, with the same table, will get 300, 375, 500, and 750. Uh, everybody understand the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The amendment has failed. Uh, we are back to the main motion, which is to amend the personnel bylaw, Chapter 15, to add Section 27 as printed in the annual town meeting warrant, as it was read. And I'm going to leave it there. Oh, yeah. Sorry, thank you.
So, again, for those of us who were here last year, the longevity bonus was debated at length, voted in, worked out well, but as I think one of the commenters said earlier, longevity, uh, uh, pay is typically a one-off when there are situations where you're losing a lot of employees, a lot of turnover, you really need to keep qualified help all the time here. We voted last year for a one-time event, and I think the select board was clear back then, it was a one-time event, and the select board has the ability going forward to make another one-time event. Our challenge that we have in the town now is without the personnel board, where all this should be happening, right? Here, we're doing it on the town meeting floor, and in point of fact, this is personnel board stuff. But the fact of the matter is, a longevity bonus is, is not expected to be paid every year, again, unless every year, you're losing a lot, there's a lot of turnover of qualified health that takes a long time to, to replace. So, there's never a notion after, at the vote last year, to have this every year going forward. I'm not saying, suggesting that at some point in the future, the, the select board may need to put this back in place, but this language clearly just says, this is every year. If that's the case, just increase their wages and stop calling it something that it's really not. So, that's why the select, the, the advisory committee didn't vote to do this, it wasn't funded, but at the end of the day, it's also putting this requirement annually to pay this, again, and whatever value it is, $40,000 this year, a little bit more next year, next year, next year. And again, not that we may not need this someday, but to make it a, a requirement annually is something that the town just can't afford, and, you know, we passed the budget for what we did just under the levy limit, we spent some free cash tonight, but at the end of the day, we've got to be thinking about how we're going to manage the, the, the costs here, and so, we're, we're, Tim Rowan is adamantly opposed to this, this article.
So, we, we've got a gentleman there, and then I'll, and then I'll come to you.
Sean Mulligan, 17 River Street. I, I agree with Mr. Rowan completely. Um, you know, I think all of us are in favor of fair pay for our town employees. I, I don't think that the way to determine wages is by citizen petition and this kind of process, this is, you know, and it is just a, this is just a pay raise. I mean, that's really what it is, and I don't think this is the proper way to handle that. Thank you.
Oh, right here.
So, I just wanted to follow up on Tim's comments. As chairman of the advisory committee, we normally do not make any sort of votes or discuss citizen petitions, but in this case, we felt that the financial obligation which was implied by putting this into the bylaw, where as Tim said, it's year by year, the selectmen are committed to putting this in, given the circumstances, where I don't know if anyone had spoken yet, again, give me two minutes or a minute, just to clarify, we came in with a budget that was over the levy limit. We had to make significant cuts this year on a number of various items, which we have never done before to that extent. Putting this in, we felt it was strong. All of us, plus Marty Manish, who is not here tonight, felt very strongly, so that we voted unanimously to not have this as a, in the bylaw, but allow, depending on the circumstances with the revenue and the expenses of the town each year, to give it this discretion to the selectmen to award this if they wish, if, if there is money, et cetera. Not that it's locking it in at this number, which is just another large number that we'll have to find, cut somewhere else out of a budget. So, that was just to, to clarify and to emphasize the importance that the advisory committee gave to this particular item, which was a citizen petition.
A couple of technicalities. I'm confused by all the back and forth. I'm not sure I'm for this or against it, but it was called a stipend. And if I got the definition of a stipend, it says, the definition of a stipend is paid, generally paid to interns, trainees, students, in addition to regular pay to offset... generally paid to interns, trainees, students, in addition to regular pay to offset certain expenses. There are taxing implications for those receiving stipends. They are considered income, but not immediately taxed." If this is a stipend, then do we have a right? It says stipend in the, it said, it says it is a stipend. If it is a stipend, do we have a right to vote no next year to eliminate it? I don't know.
I, this would be an amendment to the bylaws, and so, I, you know, town council is gonna say something, so...
Good evening, folks. I don't like to say much, but it's still gonna need to be funded every year, right? So, it's still gonna be subject to appropriation. Adding it to the bylaw will create an expectation amongst employees that they will receive it, but you can't pay it if it's not appropriated.
So, clarify that in a layman's term. Could we vote next year not to do it, if we vote this year to do it?
Yes, but when you have it as a bylaw amendment, right? You either don't fund it, or you take it out of the, the bylaws, and that takes time.
And it would be a two-thirds vote?
No, it's a general bylaw, so it'd only be a majority vote.
Okay.
Let me just, let me just, so, it would be required to be in the budget every year? The appropriation is ultimately what it would be. And town meeting could choose not to fund those stipends?
Okay.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't have a Personnel Board. And we're talking on, we don't have turnover, we do have turnover. And so forth. It would be nice if we had more quantifiable data about if we are, if we do have turnover, if our pay is not competitive with other towns. I don't know that. We may be paying, underpaid, we may be overpaid. I would, I would suggest that we postpone this indefinitely. And, and get some more quantifiable data.
All right, so, your time is up, but you did make a motion to postpone indefinitely. You know, we, we, we might be able to get away, we, I think we were very close to actually just taking a vote. So, is there any further debate on the main motion before I get to the postpone indefinitely? Because it's not, not been seconded yet, and I haven't asked for it. I guess I'm just, there's been a second. So, the motion is now to postpone indefinitely, and we all know what that means. We can continue to debate the underlying motion if we choose. So, is there any, is there any debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely?
Mr. Moderator, I call the question.
Oh, thank God.
Uh, there's, there, there's a motion to, to move the previous question, which means you want to end debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, debate is over. The motion to postpone indefinitely is before us, all those in fav... Okay, let me make sure. I know that we've been through this a few times, but a yes vote will kill this motion, and we're done. Oh, will kill the motion. If we vote no, we will continue to debate this and, and take another vote on it later, okay? All those in favor of postponing indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to postponing indefinitely, say no. The ayes have it, the motion is postponed indefinitely. That is the last article on the warrant. There being no other business before us, I am calling the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your participation. Yeah, I'm not gonna wait.